Call to seven o'clock county commissioners meeting to order. Call on Mr. and Mrs. Johnson for invocation.
Okay, let's pray please. Heavenly Father, once again we come to a time with which we're faced with difficult decisions. And Father, we confess immediately our lack of understanding and our lack of wisdom. We pray that you would give us understanding, you would give us wisdom. I pray that we'd be animated by a desire to serve you and glorify you. That our pursuit would be for the truth, that our decisions would be based on facts, and that, Father, we would demonstrate the Spirit of Jesus Christ. We thank you for each one here and the interest they've shown by being here. We thank you for bringing them safely here. We pray that you'll give them safe travel home. We pray for our nation tonight. We pause to pray for those who protect us around the world. We pray that you would keep them from harm. We pray that you would heal those who've been wounded. We pray you would comfort those families who've paid the greatest of all prices. And we ask these things in Christ's name, amen.
Let us stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call on Mr. Smith at this time.
We have several conditional use requests on the agenda tonight, and as a matter of procedure, there is a requirement that if you plan to speak for or against or present for any of these cases, that you must be sworn in. And we have a table with bibles on the front here, and that includes the McLean case, the Johnson case, the Landcraft management case, and the E&amp;J development case. So if you do have, plan to speak in any of those situations, please come on up right now and.
Mr. Smith, before we do that, could we, you let them know about the withdrawal?
I'm sorry. There is a set of stickers on the table as well, in a black box, that you need to pull out and put on when you actually come up to give your testimony, or have on before you come and give your testimony. And in addition, we have two cases that were withdrawn tonight, and those are the two Tumis cases, 07-07-3 and 07-07-4, and I may have got out of order.
Yeah, that's okay. If there's anyone here for the Tumis cases, you do not have to stay through the remainder of the meeting, they have been withdrawn from the docket. And before we have you come up, we're going to do a couple of administrative matters. Call on Mr. Maston for adjustment of agendas.
Mr. Chair, well, that was the only adjustment to the agenda we had this evening, was the withdrawal. We do have a written withdrawal from the applicant for 07-07-3 and 07-07-4. That is the adjustment, or those are the adjustments to the agenda that I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, does any of the board members have an addition or corrections to the agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Motion's been made, any questions? All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, as having. Okay, next item, I'm gonna open up now for public hearings. We have one appointment before the board, and that is Dr. Julie Sharp. Is she here in the audience? If she's not here, we'll move right along. Again, the public hearings, the next item is consideration of an economic development incentive for Carolina Beer and Beverage LLC. Ms. Underwood, if you come up, please.
Good evening. I'm here before you tonight to request your consideration of an economic development incentive grant for Carolina Beer and Beverage. They are in the process of doing a manufacturing expansion to their facility in Mooresville. It is a six and a half million dollar expansion. The incentive grant will be over a five-year term, twenty-three thousand, one hundred and forty dollars, and over the five years, this would be a hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred dollars. I have with me tonight Mike Smith, the CEO of Carolina Beer and Beverage, who would like to address to you about this expansion.
Chairman Norman, Vice Chairman Tice, Commissioners Johnson, Williams, and Robertson, I want to thank you for your time tonight and share briefly about Carolina Beer Company. My name's Michael Smith, and I'm the CEO. We started the business ten years ago, and I remember standing here before the other commission and asking for some help to start this company in Mooresville. I'm glad to say that we have not only been successful, but we're expanding our business in an area of manufacturing jobs, which, and we're glad, very glad to be in Mooresville in Ardell County. Like many businesses, it was a struggle when we first got started, and our mission was to succeed by making our own brands, which is Carolina Blonde Beer, which as most people are familiar with. But where our true growth has been is in our strategic contract packaging for other folks. And this is what's instigated not only the expansion several years ago, of a six million dollar expansion we did that opened in 2006, which has been very successful. That's operating twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. We employ eighty full-time employees at our plant. Seasonally, that number exceeds a hundred and twenty for the peak seasons of beverage. So with this next expansion, we have been so successful with that, we were presented with an opportunity to be one of three places in the United States that can package a specialty beverage container manufactured by another North Carolina company, which is Wrexham Corporation. We're going to be one of three places in the United States to package this. We're glad to bring it to Mooresville. It's going to add, with not only is it going to add a tax base of six and a half million dollars with our expansion, we're expecting that initially to add twenty-five more full-time manufacturing jobs for the first shift and hopefully build from there to a three-shift operation. I'm here tonight to thank you for considering us, for this agenda, and for helping us stay in Ardell County, where we hope to continue to prosper and provide a good tax base for this county, and also be a good employer and a good community company. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do we have anyone else in the audience who wants to speak in favor or against this If not, do we have a motion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant this economic development incentive grant for Carolina Beer and Beverage LLC.
Thank you, Ms. Tice. You heard the motion, you have any questions regarding the request? Or the motion? If not, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed likewise. Okay, Ms. O'Connor. Ms. O'Connor?
Thank you. Second request tonight is to request your consideration of economic development incentive grant for Kyle Busch Racing to build a new racing facility in Mooresville in the Tauber Point Business Park. It is a six million dollar investment. He would be bringing a new shop. Currently, the shop is in Concord in a leased facility. This would be building a brand-new shop. There are six employees. As a new, younger driver, there's a lot of potential with this team to expand in the future, and we're asking your consideration. It is an economic development incentive grant of twenty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars a year for five years, for total economic development grant of a hundred and six thousand, eight hundred over five years.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the audience who would speak in favor or against this request? Not, do we have a motion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I propose that we grant a one hundred and six thousand, eight hundred dollar economic development incentive based upon a six million dollar investment from Busch Racing.
Other questions from the board regarding his motion? If not, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed likewise. Mr. Smith, Mike Smith, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of projects to talk about tonight. The first one is a project that it would be the second Fortune 500 company to have flight operations at the Statesville Regional Airport. They would be, have an investment of up to forty million dollars, new tax base, and create twenty full-time jobs paying above the county average of fifteen, thirteen per hour. And we are requesting an economic development incentive grant to help this project come to our community.
Do we have anyone else wishing to speak in regards to this consideration? If not, do we have a motion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this request that Mr. Smith has presented and granted incentive grant ranging from three hundred and fifty-six thousand up to seven hundred and twenty, seven hundred and twelve thousand over a five-year period based on investment in our account of not less than twenty million and up to forty million dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions from the board? Not, do we have a mo, you get the motion, all in favor of the motion, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. Mrs. Smith, second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second project we have tonight to talk about is Amesbury Company, which is located here in Ardell County. This project would be an expansion of four point five million dollars and create thirty-six new jobs here in our community. This is a growing company, it's a very competitive project, and we're very excited also tonight to have the plant manager, Mr. Rich Dustin, here tonight to speak to you as well about this project.
Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. As Mike indicated, this is a competitive project in that our company also owns a facility in Rochester, New York that has available space, and so we have worked very hard to convince them that the Center of Excellence for the manufacture of this product is here in Statesville, and to allow us to have this expansion here and add the jobs here, as opposed to moving the operation to Rochester. This is coming from an existing facility that is in Graham, Texas, that will be closing down. So we're excited about this opportunity to bring the business here, to bring the jobs here. People at our facility have worked very hard to make a name for ourselves in the industry. So, once again, I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this request or against it or speak at all? Okay, if not, do we have a motion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we grant this economic development incentive for the Amesbury Company of eighty thousand, one hundred dollars over a five-year period. Economic development incentive based on a four and a half million dollar investment.
Thank you, Ms. Tice. Any questions from the board? All in favor of the request, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed likewise. Thank you. Before I call Mr. Smith up front, if you, when you get up front, to be sworn in, if you pick up one of these tabs, so we'll know that you have been sworn in. If you do not have that tab, then we won't recognize you tonight unless you're sworn in, because all the conditional use, we have four left, too. You have to be sworn in to speak. So if you do that. The other thing is, we have those people who are speaking in regards to their particular projects, you will have five minutes, everyone else will have three minutes. Mr. Robertson will keep time, and we will ask you at that time to please sit down. If not, we'll ask you to leave. So we got to keep order, we got to give everybody the same opportunity to speak. If you look around the room, you can see how many people are in here, so there's a lot of people here. So call on Mr. Smith at this time.
I have a question about what you just said.
Yes.
Does that mean regardless of having, having a speaker, you can have a minute to sign up to each side if they're, if that's right?
Well, that is true. Everyone will have three minutes in the audience. Those who have the actual cases before us will have five minutes. Mr. Smith, I will ask our attorney to come up, everyone in who wants to speak. Everyone who needs to speak tonight, if you'll come up front, place your hands on the bible, we'll do that at this time.
If you have all ready testimony or evidence, we will.
You're going to be out late tonight.
I think Jean came up with the sticker idea.
What was the one?
Mercy, bless her heart.
Central.
Did you make enough stickers?
It's a same sticker.
Very nice person, but I didn't know.
Something, some failed.
It, where was it?
Folks, you need to come on up and put your hand on the bible if you plan to speak.
Left hand on the bible, raise your right hand.
Disorder in the court.
All right, I've got them all up. The heat of you, square or bar testimony or evidence of your Bible presented to this commission will be the truth, I hope, nothing but the truth. Now, when you, before you take a seat, say one of these slips, and when you come forward, show that slip, so we'll leave you in form.
How you doing?
The first public hearing request that we have tonight is dealing with a proposed suspension, sixty-day suspension of the approvals of all or any wireless telecommunications tower within ten miles of the Statesville Regional Airport. This request has been initiated by some, a recent request from the Airport Commission based on new innovations and improvements that have taken place to both the airport and aircraft. And based on the fact that we are, these improvements will cause us to look at amending our airport hazard overlay ordinance, we are requesting that this sixty-day suspension be put in place. And I'd be glad to try and answer any questions that you might have.
Any members of the board have questions?
One comment, actually, I'm chairman of the Airport Commission. Mr. Chairman, this request actually was requested by the Airport Commission at the behest of Mr. Bill Maiselik, who's head of the Aviation Division of the DOT. So he recommended that we declare this, or ask, or seek this more toward him from the city council and the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in regards to this request? Okay, come on up, sir. Will you come to the mic? Just state your name, please.
My name's Jim Freeland, I live in North Ireland. And I'm an old man, but I'm a private pilot, and I fly low and slow. And you get something up over two hundred and twenty-five feet up here, I may take the top off of it. So it's a danger anywhere within ten miles of the airport. That's all.
Aye, thanks, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, do we have a motion from the board regarding this request?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt this suspension of new wireless telecommunications tower approval ordinance.
Okay, you heard the motion. Any questions from board members? All in favor of the request, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed likewise. Mr. Smith.
Thank you. The second request, case number 0703-1, submitted by Harry and Louise McLean and Charles and Janet McLean, is located at 964 Snow Creek Road. And the request is to go from R-20, single-family residential, to M-2 CUD, Heavy Manufacturing Conditional Use District. The applicant has agreed to some conditions that cause this to be a conditional use district, and I will go through those for your information. The first is that the use will be limited to a biodiesel manufacturing facility. Commercial truck deliveries will be limited between, to, between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. No animal rendering shall take place on the property. A fire extinguishing system approved by the County Fire Marshal's Office would be, will be required. All outside storage tanks and loading facilities shall be at least one hundred feet from any residence. Dykes shall be required and must meet the requirements of the standards set forth in the Iredell County zoning ordinance. Tank maintenance shall also meet the standards of the ordinance. The gravel driveway that's currently located on the property, which is located directly adjacent to the, this piece, this residential piece here, would be moved westward per NCDOT's recommendations. A chain-link fence would be required and screening that would meet the standards of our ordinance. A thirty-foot undisturbed buffer will be provided adjacent to the residential, any residential areas, particularly this piece here. And all applicable approvals would have to be obtained from all applicable agencies, NC Deaner, EPA if they're needed, NCDOT, Fire Marshal's Office, and anyone else that would be going through the approval process. That's fairly standard procedure. This is a relatively small piece of property, it's just under eight acres, and is currently used in conjunction with a much larger farming operation. It's not, I'm sorry, it is within the South Ag can Protected Area watershed. It directly fronts on Snow Creek Road, and Snow Creek, according to NCDOT, has less than seven hundred trips per, or cars per day that utilize that road. Back in 1998, this area was, a couple of thousand acres at least were rezoned from RA to R-20, and this is on the western side of that area, but it is included in that non-owner petition that took place almost ten years ago. Our land use plan does call for this area to be, or as residential. As you can see, there are no colors other than the aerial photos that you're seeing in the area, which really depict that it is residential in nature, and there are no non-residential land uses designated. As I mentioned, this is part of an overall larger farming operation. However, we as a staff have had some problems with the actual location of the facility. I put this, I hope you can see these numbers. This is the, there are two houses on this property that's directly to the east of the site. This is an existing building on the site, and some other farm-related buildings and structures that are up on top of a hill that are much further up on the property. The current proposal is to include the bulk of the operation in that one building, which is fairly close to this house in particular, and this one that is more, that is closer to Snow Creek Road. The closest is about a hundred and fifty feet. So the staff has had some real problems with the proximity of the proposed facility to the neighbors on the eastern side in particular. And based on the fact that this is directly related to the farming operation, that's our biggest concern. We feel like the fact that Mr. McLean would be bringing in, utilizing his own crops for the bulk of the operation, at least in the beginning, is a benefit. It's a benefit to the farming community and to the community as a whole. However, this particular issue being so close to the neighbor has been a particular sticking point for us, and we've recommended against the request based on that. I will say that the planning board recommended in favor unanimously of this request. It was a ten to zero vote, which took place back in April, if I'm not mistaken. Before I go through my, before I go through my photos of the property, I've submitted a couple of different letters to Mr. Pope that have been requested to be entered into evidence at tonight's meeting. However, as we've talked about this, there are some legal issues that probably need to be discussed before we go any further on that.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Smith handed me five envelopes, each of which has a commissioner's name on it, and each of which is sealed and appears to be, has a return address at least from the Iredell County Farm Bureau. I don't know what's in these envelopes. In addition, I've been handed what appears to be a letter from Southern Alliance for Clean Energy. It's actually a photocopy of a fax of a letter that is addressed to the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. I have advised Mr. Smith that this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, and that it's my opinion that it's inappropriate for the commissioners to consider non-sworn testimony. And I believe these documents here would constitute non-sworn testimony. So my recommendation to you is that you not consider these pieces of paper here, whatever they are.
Okay. Thank you. This is a view of the site. This is the property, or this is the structure that would be closest to the neighboring property. This is an outbuilding on the Leach's property, which is directly to the east. This is the driveway coming in off of Snow Creek Road, and these are the farm structures that I mentioned earlier. This is a view from the site, looking out towards Snow Creek and the outbuildings and the main house on that property next door. Again, looking up towards the, what I call the top of the hill on this property. This is, this is looking east on Snow Creek Road, and that's the adjacent. And this is looking west. There's a house right here, and this is actually across the street and down going west from the site, but I believe this picture's taken from the driveway. And again, adjacent residents. And I would be glad to try and answer any questions that you have about the presentation that I've given.
Do the members have, which will have questions? Okay. Okay, Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Smith, you said your main concern was the close proximity of the operation to the adjoining residences. Was that your... Was that your primary concern, only concern?
I have, I have some other concerns, particularly with the designation of M2 in North Iredell, in the middle of residential. The biggest concern was the proximity to those houses and the road directly adjacent to the property owner. However, my concern about the M2 brings up other issues about other businesses that are done in conjunction with farming. And it's a bigger issue that we can't address tonight, but, you know, that is one thing that I have also considered.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Smith, on the distance, you mentioned that distance, been too close, then what's the safe distance, if there is one?
Well, not being an expert in this, we have setbacks in our ordinance for other uses which are more intensive than this one, in my opinion, that are truly petroleum-based, and those setbacks are 500 feet, which, in this case, you know, this is well within that 500 feet, but that's the basis that I've used for my staff report.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before Mr. Smith sets time from the board?
Mr. Smith, back in 98, I was a member of the board when the petition was brought to the commissioners to rezone this property from RA to R20, under a large non-owner petition, and was subsequently approved by the commissioners. How binding is this contract between the neighbors?
When, when that petition was submitted and subsequently approved, it was really just that. It was a petition that was based on standards in our ordinance to go through a specific process. They needed 80% to be in favor to actually go through with that. It was a rule that was put in place, I believe, by the commissioners at that time. And really had no binding authority, in my opinion. The property owners could come back at a later date and rezone to whatever they wanted to, even back to RA if that's what they so chose. So I wouldn't say that it was binding other than between the neighbors.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I think I remember properly, I think as a percentage of the property owners, that was the lowest percentage of a non-owner petition ever adopted by this board, I believe. I believe it's around 68%, I believe.
I think that's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I will entertain someone who's in favor of the request to speak for the request, and then after that, I'll entertain someone who's against the request to speak, and you have five minutes each.
Yes, sir.
I think he's entitled to confront the persons offering testimony and ask questions.
Okay, we can do that at the end, once everyone's spoken. Again, if we have someone wishing to speak in favor of this request.
My name is Phil McLean. Chairman Norman, Vice President Chairman Tice, and members of the board, I thank you for this opportunity to come before you tonight. This is a joint venture. This is a family project that our family is putting together. I'm in partnership with my brother Mike, who is behind me, and my son Phillip. And I have some things here that I would like to submit to the board, if it's okay. It gives some background and some information. Would it be all right for me to submit those to you at this time?
Well, we don't know what it is.
What it is, is it's a package of information that tells about the people who are going to give, some of the people that are going to give testimony tonight. It's also about the process. There's the schematics in here. There's information, there's tank quantities. It's about, it gives the, what type of chemicals are being used. It's just everything about it that we could think of to assemble together for you, for you to peruse as we are talking about things tonight.
Are you prepared to identify each document in there and verify the contents?
Sure.
All right. When you've done that, we'll consider that.
Okay, can I present these now? And there's a few pictures.
And I'll hand them out.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, could I have a clarification, please, about giving testimony? I have subject matter experts here tonight, and they can give testimony. I was going to introduce them as I did my 15-minute thing, but since I have five now, should I introduce them and let them take their two to three minutes, and then me continue after that, or how would you like for me to proceed?
Well, let me check, see how much time has he used so far? That's Robert.
Oh, I thought we were waiting for him to start.
Okay, we'll go ahead. If you'd like to do that, I don't have a problem, as long as they realize they've got three minutes each. We don't have a problem anyway.
It's just going to make it harder for you to keep up with my five minutes, but I'll be glad to do it any way that you want me to.
Okay. They'll have three, you've got five.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Well, again, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I am so happy to be here tonight, finally. I think one thing that we can all agree on here in the room tonight is we'll all be glad when this is over. There's been a lot of speculation, and there's been a lot of interesting facts going around. And I'm glad that we had sworn in tonight, because everything that I'm going to offer you tonight is going to be right much different from what we've read in the papers and what people are saying. And what I'm going to give you are the facts. And you don't have to believe me, you can believe the subject matter experts that we have here. Their resumes are in there so that you can see that they've got over 30 years of experience. And so what I'm talking about tonight is not conjecture at all. It is all known qualities. One of the members in the community told me that, you know, we just simply don't know what's going to happen with this. Well, we do. It's already being done in, not in Iredell County, but in adjoining counties. I also have a subject matter expert tonight here, his name is Randy Dellinger, and he owns a facility in Caldwell County, and he will have an opportunity to come up. We also have somebody here from the department, from Deaner, Patrick Grogan, who will talk about issues of the permits that we'll have to do and everything like that. So I'm just going to try to address the things that I need to address, and then let them address all safety issues, dicking, things like that, matters about chemical questions and so on like that. Some of the things that I need to talk about is why, first of all, I think the question has been asked, why does it, well, it's been said it doesn't belong there. And that's the first one I want to respond to. This is an agricultural situation. And on this very farm, my grandfather owned this farm, and he had a cotton gin, and he also had an alfalfa dehydration plant. They were doing value-added a long time ago. We're really just following, in principle, the things that we've always done in Iredell County, and we're just continuing that. The difference is, back then, they didn't have the requirements that we have now, so we have to follow those. But these are products that, it's not going to be any bigger than 6 million gallons. We've talked about 20 million in the paper, and in other places, it's not 20 million gallons. It's 6 million. That's the most my plant can produce, our plant. And the experts here will testify to that. If we do that, then that keeps things down to a much smaller level. In the beginning, we may not use any more than what we can produce on our own farm. Probably at least half of what we'll use on the start will come from our crops. This will directly benefit us to bring a product to the market that will give us more value in agriculture. We in agriculture have worked hard for years to try to get closer to the consumer. We've been encouraged to do this by the federal government, and it's being done all over the land. It's done everywhere, and we're just trying to follow suit. The benefits economically to the community will be fantastic. It's not just going to benefit us, it's going to benefit our neighbors. Our neighbors who are farmers that grow crops, if they grow soybeans and sell them to our processing plant, they'll gain 50 cents a bushel by not having to take them to Raleigh. If they buy the soybean meal, or the canola meal, or whatever, they don't have to go all the way to Raleigh to pick up that meal. And so dairy farmers and poultry farmers can save as much as $12 a ton on that. So that money all remains in Iredell County. And if there are any profits that come from this project, and I'll be honest with you, I don't know if this is going to be a profitable business. The reason that we've gotten into it is because we're concerned about the future. Are we going to run into crisis in the future where we have a disruption in our fuel chain? And we've seen that already, just from a hurricane in New Orleans. We think that that's going to happen more and more in the future. This country is not very well-loved in the world. And Achilles' heel is petroleum. They've got us over a barrel, so to speak. I think someday we're going to see some real problems because of that. If we have a biodiesel facility in Iredell County, and those disruptions occur, then there is an opportunity for us to be able to continue because we're producing biodiesel at that facility. So it's a security issue more than it is a profit issue, and that's why our family wanted to get into it. And everybody in the community, if there's a problem like that, we would be glad to help our neighbors out if they got into a crunch like that. So that's one of the other reasons. Another big issue that comes up is truck traffic. And we're going to add 26 trucks to the road with, if we go completely to 6 million gallons, that includes the processing part and the biodiesel part. 26 loads means 13 coming in and 13 going out. And there's just less than 700 already now, so that's not a big issue. Okay, all right. Some of the other issues we need to talk about are the safety issues, and I would like to ask some of our witnesses to come up, and I'd like to enter.
Mr. McLean, we're not going to run it that way. Your time's up.
Okay.
You need to sit down, and I'll call the other guy, and we'll call the other people a little later.
Okay, thank you.
Not at this time. Someone who's speaking against this request, from that group, would you come up this time? You have five minutes.
They have a representative.
You have a representative, you get five minutes.
Against or for?
Against. Against. Okay. State your name.
I'm Brian Leach, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I've got a little slide presentation here. I live adjacent to the proposed location on Snow Creek for the biodiesel plant, and yes, I am against it. I would just like to show some slides here of where we live, and make some comments on what Mr. McLean has stated. This is Snow Creek Road, and I'm just trying to figure out what part of M2 fits into a R20. I really don't think that heavy manufacturing districts should go into a single-family residential district that we have as a community out there. I don't know if you're familiar with Snow Creek, but here's an aerial photo of what Snow Creek looks like now. And the arrow is the proposed location for it to go out there. This is the industrial park in Statesville. This is where I think it should be with the rest of the industry. It's better fit there, the fire department's better to handle it there, the truck traffic is already there, the roads are there for everything. By Mr. McLean stating that they can produce 6 million gallons, I figured it, 3,744,000 gallons. That would take 936 tractor-trailer loads, that's 18 trucks a week. I can't give you hard statistics on trucks coming in and out because I don't know his byproducts coming in, don't know where it's going to go, who's going to get it, if it's going to be farmers coming to get it, but I can tell you that the traffic on Snow Creek Road is going to go up at least 40 to 60%. I mean, I see a number of trucks now, but the number of trucks that'd be added would be greatly increased. This is a picture of the plant that's there now that came out of the newspaper. The entrance, this is the proposed location right now that they had is the entrance driveway that's right on the top of the hill beside my driveway on Snow Creek Road. But before you get there, there's a blind curve to the entrance that you can't see at all. You come around that curve, and you have less than 290 feet before you get to my driveway. This is the driveway for the location, the entrance now, there's the proposed location at 100 feet away from the existing entrance. And in this next picture, it will show you all three driveways. Mine is the 956 Snow Creek driveway. The McLean Farm entrance now is directly beside mine, 27 feet away, and the proposed entrance is 100 feet away from that. This is coming from the other direction on Snow Creek. You can't even see the proposed location for the driveway. Would you like your child waiting on a bus with all that traffic? This is my son standing beside the road. This will be a school bus stop for my kid to go to school, and all this diesel fuel and methane coming by every day. This is the Bridges Residence, which is the neighbor in the curve. This is what their view from their front yard would be like from Snow Creek Road to show a proximity to where the plant would be. This is from my house, it's 291 feet to the building where the proposed location is. This is the distance between my driveway and the existing driveway that's there. It's 90 feet from my outbuilding to the facility now. From my guest house where my mother-in-law lives, it's 182 feet from her front door. 192 feet from driveway to her front door. Special use permit, on item number four, it says that the special use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or that the use is a public necessity. You think with a diesel fuel plant in my backyard that I'm going to be able to sell my house for its appraised value? Here's the appraisal right there. My house appraised at $220,000. If this plant were to go in, do you think I could sell it for that? We moved there to be in the country, not in an industrial park. These are just some pictures to show you what Snow Creek Road looks like from one end to the other. They're all houses on Snow Creek Road. I don't see a single manufacturing facility on Snow Creek Road. Also, we have a pond across the street, and proposes runoff to eventually wind up in the Catawba River, eventually. There's the sign for the school bus stop ahead, but after you go over the hill, you couldn't even see the bus over there.
So your time is up?
Yeah, I've just got three more slides here. Three more slides. That's just the proposed location. There's the building that the equipment's in. And that's for the McLeans, would they like it beside their house? And I'll leave this here in case somebody else needs pictures off of it.
Mr. McLean, if you want to call three of your expert witnesses at this time?
Okay, I would like to call up first J. Rayly, then I would like to call up Patrick Grogan, and then also I'd like to have Randy Dellinger to come up.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I hate to interrupt, but we are having a problem with the cooling tonight, and I know there's a lot of people, it's uncomfortable. What I plan to do at this time is just to cut off some of the lights to hold down some of the heat, and I'll apologize for it, but there's nothing we can do about it.
And we feel it. We feel the pain. Thank you, sir.
No complaints.
Sir, who's speaking? We're losing time.
My name is, my name is J., thank you, Mr. Commissioners, Mr. Commissioner. My name is J. M. Rayly. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of North Carolina, and the owner of a engineering company that specializes in process engineering of these types of facilities. The facility will use various materials as outlined in your package. The material safety data information are enclosed. I can assure the kind of commissioners that these types of facilities are designed to intrinsically safe conditions. intrinsically safe conditions as dictated by the National Fire Prevention Association and National Electrical Code. There will be several construction and construction permits that will be required to do anything like this. And as part of the normal approval process, your local fire marshal and your local building inspection office will have final interpretation of any such regulations. We design these things, these types of operations to national guidelines, but final approval is local building inspection dictated. So all I have to say unless there's any questions.
Mr. Commissioner, I'm Patrick Grogan. I'm a representative of the North Carolina Department of Environment and Natural Resources. I'm a one-stop permit coordinator. I've been working with Mr. McLean since the spring on all environmental permits that would be needed. Based on the calculations from his consultant engineers, he will be below the minimum requirements for the air quality permits for the state. You do not need an air quality permit until you get over five tons of pollutants, and he is well below that. All the tanks will be required to have spill prevention counter-control measures, which is the dykes that you're hearing about, that would contain the volume of that tank if it was completely full and had a complete eruption, which all the liquid would spill out. They are required to have that containment. We've gone through all the other environmental permits through the state, and as I'm getting new information on it, if permits will come up, he will be required and regulated through the state to get those before production is started.
We'll have a session once we go through both sides, where we'll have a chance to
Hello, my name is Randy Dillinger. It's a pleasure to be here. I am a managing partner in Fiddle's Bioenergies, which is a biodiesel production facility in Caldwell County. I'm here to speak tonight about the aesthetics of a biodiesel production facility. In terms of a chemical processing facility, it falls fairly low on a totem pole in terms of hazardous materials and so forth. So if it's constructed within the electrical codes, within the fire marshal codes and so forth, they're fairly benign plants to operate and maintain. There are some concerns. He's working with a very good engineering and design firm, and I'm sure that they'll take all those things into consideration. My doors are open to any of you guys to come visit and get a tour of our plant. I have another engagement tonight I have to be in shortly, but feel free to contact me. My contact information is available in the packet or through Phil. And I know the gentlemen that are the design firm that are working with Phil, and I can speak very highly to their credentials. And with that, I'll leave you to your business.
Thank you. Now, do I have three individuals who are opposing this request?
Okay, you state your name.
My name is Bill Pitt. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, good evening. My wife and I own the land directly across Snow Creek Road from the proposed rezoning site, and I certainly appreciate the opportunity to appear before you and make the case for not approving the zoning change from R20 to conditionally-use heavy manufacturing. Must be said that renewable fuels in general need to be part of our country's future energy plans, and biodiesel should be part of that future. But the materials and process used in the production of biodiesel and the waste products generated as a result of the biodiesel reaction make the proposed site unsuitable. The process itself is called transestrification, and in it, rendered animal fat or soy or canola oil is mixed with an alcohol, typically methanol, in the presence of a catalyst, typically li or potassium hydroxide. Mixtures heated to approximately 140 degrees and stirred for two hours. A chemical reaction takes place producing glycerin and biodiesel. After the chemical reaction, the biodiesel is submitted to a wash step in which water in the amount of 50 to 100 percent of the biodiesel volume is added, gently agitated, then the mixture allowed to settle so it can separate from the fuel, taking leftover methanol and li with it. The intended volumes of the petitioners' plant at 6 million gallons per annum would require roughly 24,000 gallons per day output on a 250-day working year, and approximately 2,800 gallons of methanol and approximately 240 gallons of li input. If li is the catalyst, 50 percent more methanol than the formula rate calls for is used to achieve a high rate of conversion of the oil to biodiesel. And if potassium hydroxide is used as the catalyst, 100 percent more methanol is used. Any of these capacities will require tanker-truck load lots of methanol, multiple drum load deliveries of li or potassium hydroxide, and safe storage of them, as well as suitable and substantial storage capabilities for in-process biodiesel, finished biodiesel, biodiesel washwater, and glycerin. While you consider the challenges of safely transporting, storing, and handling these volumes of materials at this site, especially in view of the fact that it is in an important watershed for Iredell County, let's look a little bit at the outputs of this process. At a run rate of 6 million gallons per annum, approximately 12 million pounds of glycerin and 3 to 6 million gallons of washwater will be generated and will need to be stored. These products, especially the glycerin, will be laced with li and methanol. How are these materials and these volumes going to be dealt with safely? What do the storage facilities look like? Are they appropriate for volatiles and like methanol or caustics like li?
You're out of time.
I'm out of time, okay. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Do we have someone else wishing to speak against this request?
I'm C. Ward, and I live on Wilkes-Barre Highway, about a half to three-quarters a mile from the proposed plant. I have lived in this area for approximately, well, since 1979. Most of you know me, but for the ones that don't, I'm a retired North Carolina state trooper. I retired with 30 years of trained experience in traffic and accident investigation. I have been certified in some court cases as an expert. The road width in this area where the proposed site is going to be is eight feet and six inches, and this is a one-travel lane. The shoulders are arranged from three to five feet. There is an average of 920 vehicles traveling the road a day. The last traffic count on this road was done in 2005. There are five school bus routes on Snow Creek Road. School buses will be traveling this road in the morning and afternoon. There are school bus stops near the prepared site. When school takes in, the risk of accidents increase tremendously because of the school traffic, which includes parents taking children to school in the morning and in the afternoon. School buses also travel on this road and numerous inexperienced drivers of school age. By adding more truck traffic to the risk of accidents increase, if this site goes into full operation, there will be as many as 20 trucks a day entering this site. Going east on Snow Creek Road is a distance first sight out of the curve on the proposed driveway is approximately 300 feet. If an automobile driver traveling on the Snow Creek Road at 55 mile an hour sees a hazard, it takes him 255 feet to stop. This is called a panic stop. A vehicle traveling 55 miles an hour crossing 80 feet a minute per second, crossing 55, crossing 80 feet per second. The two vehicles going in opposite directions will cover 160 feet per second. A school bus traveling at 45 mile an hour is traveling 66 feet per second, and if it was an automobile, it would take 189 feet to stop. Trucks traveling this road going to the site and hauling animal waste for grease will most likely be spilling liquid on the road, especially near the driveway, are required to cover, the trucks are required to cover the road, but you can't keep the smell under the cover. If a truck wrecks, the spill is multiplied. I have been on these wrecks, I know the smell. It is multiplied twice if it's on the ground, and the cleanup time takes long. There have been numerous accidents on Snow Creek Road, at least two fatalities at or near where the proposed driveway is to be, with the extra truck traffic.
You are out of your time.
Thank you, sir.
Do I have another person wishing to speak against this request?
Good evening, Commissioner and Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity for you to hear me today. My name is Jerry Michaud. I and my wife Becky live at 1044 Snow Creek Road. Our property does join the McLean property. Our upper property line is approximately 500 feet from where the proposed biodiesel site will be. At any particular time, if you look out of my family room, our kitchen, our side yard, we have direct view to this site. We have view of where the proposed truck entrance would be and where the present one is. I would like to enter as evidence into you guys, if I may, my credentials, and I will tell you what they are, along with some MSDS sheets that I take issue with as far as what is safe and what is not safe. I am certified by the North Carolina Department of Labor as a certified IMCA instructor. That is mine, Safety Health Administration. I'm certified by TIA, Tire Institute of America, in explosions of contained vessels. I'm a safety director for a service facility and a trucking division. I'm here tonight not in opposition to a biodiesel facility, but in opposition to rezoning R20 land to M2. These two zoning requirements are at opposite ends of the spectrums. We are 100 percent for the greening of America. We are for biodiesel. We are for renewable fuel sources, but only in an approved M2 industrial site. And I think these M2 industrial sites were approved by the commission here and are in the Iredell County Land Use Plan. There was some talk about the opposition a little earlier with the McLean family, who are friends of mine and are neighbors of mine, when Lowe's Corporation was coming to northern Iredell County. Phil led the opposition against Lowe's Corporation in trying to combat the M1 zoning. That was industrial facility. Inadvertently, it was approved. Mike led the charge in the R20 zoning, which was passed at much displeasure to the Snow Creek community. I don't understand, once we have this zoning in place, why it needs to be changed again. As you saw from the slides, this is a residential community. There will be no benefit for myself, the property owners there. We will have to subsidize their operation with decreased value of our property. I have grave concerns for our safety, the safety of our livestock, the safety of our land, and the safety of our water supply. There are three basic chemicals that are involved in biodiesel production. They alluded to the MSDS sheets. I presented to you copies of the MSDS sheets. I take direct opposition as a person with some expertise in these fields in discussing these chemicals with you. Sodium hydroxide, methanol. Methanol is a highly flammable gas. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, sir. Mr. McLean, do you have additional people?
I'd like to call up Ray Odom, and then Mike McLean, and then just anybody at will after that.
My name is Raymond Odom. I went to school in the great state of Louisiana. I'm a chemical engineer with 30 years' experience in this business. I've worked with alternate fuels in California, trying to make ethanol from sugarbeets. I've dealt with methanol, over hundreds of thousands of gallons stored, which I made from out of the Borden Chemical Company. It is highly protected by dykes and by fire protection systems. I take offense to, there was some, the previous restrictions, there's methane in this process. Methane's a gas. There is no methane in this process. This preferred catalyst is sodium methoxide, not caustic anymore because of the reaction of water. There's no washwater in this process. If you see the process flow diagram, it shows an ion exchange system. There's a lot of processes out there to use washwater to purify the biodiesel. Mr. McLean will not do that. We will give him a system that has no washwater anywhere in the system. The only water he will have is water from his cooling system on his vacuum pumps, which has to be a pump and haul permit if he prefers to do it that way. And I've been doing this an awful long time. I'll answer any questions after the meeting's over, anybody wants to address at that particular time. There's a value added, value added to this. There's, the methanol is also not a gas, it's a liquid. And that's basically, I thank you for your time and effort, and I'll answer any questions that they want to add at the end of the program. Thank you.
My name is Mike McLean. Commissioners, I thank you for this forum to express our views. I'm a fourth-generation farmer. My home is on the farm we are proposing to rezon. My wife Janet and I have two five-year-old kids. We have vested interest in this community, just like our neighbors. Our well is 400 feet deep, and we use the same water our neighbors use. The prevailing wind blows from west to east. The proposed site is west of us. We smell the same odors from the west, just like our neighbors. Our proposed facility will not contaminate our water or the air that we breathe. I'm certain my family and neighbors will be totally safe from this venture. There are a few things that have come up with the 500-foot setback. We will agree to the 500-foot setback and move this facility up the hill to accommodate our neighbors. Also, we will move the driveway from its present location and move it further west. Also, we will move the driveway from its present location and move it further west. One comment I have about truck traffic. Yesterday, we were harvesting corn silage, and we chopped eighty-five truckloads. Each truckload went on Snow Creek Road, and most of it was hauled after everybody had gone to work. So I doubt if everybody saw those trucks. I'm sure they probably saw some before they went to work, and they saw some when they got home. But each load that got on the road was off of the road before the next one got back on. So there's plenty of time between trucks, and that's eighty-five trucks in one day.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners and County Officials, I'm Janet Hall, and I live on the Snow Creek Road. I lived in town before marrying and moving to the farm. Residing among those who make their living by farming gives one a newfound respect for agriculture and how much we depend on these individuals. I quickly realized that farming is a high-risk occupation. Most people do not have their income based on the weather, working more than twelve hours a day with no overtime or weekends off. Farmers do not have a guaranteed paycheck with benefits. People who move to the country sometimes think that it is all quiet with birds and wildlife that abound. We need to remember, when we move to the country, it is not a country club, a residential development, or a hunting preserve. Farming is a business that provides our food and raw materials for consumer goods. All of this takes machinery, and most of all, we need to remember, the farmers were in the country before anyone decided to move to the country for the quote-unquote "good life." The biodiesel production plan pro- it proposed is being done by a farming family that has been good neighbors and stewards of the land for the past twenty-six years that I have lived there. Agribusiness must keep up with the times by implementing new ideas. If farmers do not find ways to make a profit, the land becomes too expensive, and usually the next things you see growing are housing developments. Biodiesel has been developed to expand the use of agriculture products as an environmentally safe method of alternative fuels. I applaud the McLean family for forward-thinking to keep farming one of the leading industries in Iredell County. In keeping with the slogan of Iredell being the crossroads of the future, I encourage the Commissioners to support sustainable agriculture in Iredell County.
Okay, now, if I have three speakers who would like to speak against this request, would you please come forward?
Hi, I'm Randy Bridges. I live at nine ninety-one Snow Creek Road with my wife. You have heard many of the reasons why my neighbors and I believe that this biodiesel refinery should be located in an industrial park. Let me reiterate that the issue that you will be deciding tonight is not the merits of biodiesel. The true issue is simply whether the proposed site is appropriate and whether its location will, in the words of the Conditional Use Zoning Ordinance, materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed, and that the location and character will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located. As to the character of our geographic area, in the area lying between Highway nine oh one to the north and Sullivan Farm Road and Fort Dobbs Road to the south, and lying between Highway one fifteen to the east, to the west, and Jennings Road and Highway twenty-one to the east, there are thirty-nine thousand-plus acres. There are only one hundred and twenty-nine acres owned for any type of commercial use within that boundary, and I would like to introduce the zoning map as evidence to that. And our neighborhood has been stable. In fact, according to the Iredell County building permit records, for the last ten years, there have been twenty-five building permits. One was a modular home that replaced a dwelling that was torn down. There were many decks and remodels. There were no net increase in dwellings on Snow Creek Road in the last ten years. I have a copy of a report prepared by Steve Warren to that effect that I would like to How can the petitioners ask the leeches, the pits, the michoas, the wards, the revises, the bridges, and all the other farm, families in our community to subsidize the cost of the refinery by plummeting property values and increased insurance rates due to the proximity of an industrial site? I also would like to introduce the disclosure form required at the sale of a residential property by North Carolina statute, General Statute forty-seven E, that requires you to disclose commercial or industrial nuisances, noise, odor, smoke, et cetera, affecting the Of critical importance to all citizens of Iredell County is in a, is that an approval of this petition will set a legal precedent of industrial sites in residential communities. On what grounds, then, will the Commissioners be able to deny future petitions for heavy industry in any other residential neighborhood? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
I'm Juanita Bridges, husband to, wife to Randy. You know, the other evening, we were out on our patio, and we've lived on Snow Creek Road for thirty years. It's our home, it's a good home. We've raised two fine sons there, and our grandchildren visit and play in our yard almost every week. It's a magical place to live with all the stars twinkling and a full moon. We have a little frog pond that's right outside, and the bugs flit around it, and we listen to cicadas with their music. How lucky can we be? But overshadowing this idetic, idyllic setting was the thought that this may be our last year to enjoy our little piece of heaven there. We feel safe in our own home and comfortable with our grandkids playing in the yard. Why? Because we've read all these reports of explosions of biodiesel plants, of raging fires that are responding. Fire departments are not equipped to control and evacuations of surrounding homes. We've researched the respiratory problems caused by exposures to even minute quantities of dust from the sodium hydroxide used in the process. We've read of the necessity of full biohazard suits, gloves, respirators when handling these chemicals. We dread the tanker trucks coming in and out at all hours of the day, the transfer of the methanol and caustic chemicals from truck to tank and tank to truck. We watched the runoff from the thunderstorms rush down from the field from this site and their culvert, and it blows across our yard just inches from our well. If the plant goes across in our front yard, across from our front yard, we're not going to be able to live there. We don't know how long it will take to sell our home, nor do we know how many tens of thousands of dollars that we may lose to sell it. Perhaps someday our home will become an office for an industrial park, I don't know. But I do know this, I love my family, I love my neighbors, and I truly care about my home. I truly care about our community and about Iredell County. I trust and pray that you do, too. If you do, I'm confident that you serve this little part and parcel of what makes Iredell County gray. I believe in that in your heart you will see fit to deny this request to destroy the very heart and soul of the Snow Creek Road community.
Hello, I'm Harry Watt. I live in the Trinity Fire Department area, a few miles south of Snow Creek Road. I work in the wood products industry and a lot of factories, and we use things like methanol in our finishes. And what I would like to talk about today is fire issues and fire hazards. And for ten years, I was a fireman at Trinity Volunteer Fire Department, and I put out a lot of fires. And in a rural area like the Trinity Fire District, we have trucks that may produce, we can pump, say, fifteen hundred gallons a minute through one of our trucks, but we always have difficulty trying to feed water to them. In this particular location on Snow Creek Road, as I understand it, there's hydrants on Snow Creek Church Road that will produce nine hundred gallons per minute, and that will feed sprinkler systems unless they're overloaded, but it won't feed but one fire truck. And I was at the site twenty-five years ago where we had a big silo fire in one of the silos, and even though we had twenty trucks there, it's sometimes inadequate for what actually happens, and things get out of hand quickly. I do want to present as evidence, here in Statesville, we did have a biodiesel plant that caught on fire in nineteen ninety-six, and it was not in somebody's backyard, it was in a ten, I'm sorry, two thousand and six. And it was in a ten-thousand-square-foot building. So these things can have fire hazards, and I'd like to present this to the board. Also, would like to present just a few cases of some biodiesel plants burning, and they do burn. And if you remember, the last two years here in North Carolina, we had serious fires at Morganton and Apex, North Carolina. And these caused huge problems, the whole plant's burned, there were explosions, and the whole success depends on maintenance and quality control. And even though I came from a farm background, farming and chemical processing's not the same thing. Chemical processing is quality control, engineering, and consistent attention to detail, and farming is a lot of get her done, move fast, keep moving, get it close, and an industrial site in a residential area, I don't think is appropriate. Thank you.
Will have anyone else wish to speak for this request? If you will come up? Okay. Anyone wish to speak for this request?
Is that good right there? Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Okay, my name's Nelson Riddle. We have, my family and I run a dairy, probably less than a half a mile from this proposed site, a dairy farm. And when I first heard about biodiesel, I thought I had just read an article about the dairy farmers can, can benefit from a biodiesel plant as far as using the byproducts, such as the soybean meal-type products to feed to their cows, where I don't have to, right now, I'm getting about two hours away, I'm having to pay to haul, haul it in. And so that, that was a plus for me as far as using, using a product like that to feed the livestock, and I, I think it'd be good for the farming community in general for the, as, as Phil mentioned too a while ago, the buying and the selling markets that, I could buy it locally, the, some of these byproducts to feed to the cows, cows, and it also provides a selling market, too, for people selling the soybeans and the, like you said, the canola and the, and the, I think, the sunflower and all that stuff. And another thing, I was wanting to talk about environmental regulations that they'll have to heed to. We are, I can, I can attest to that based on back when hog lagoons down east and we, cattle, cattle places got hit, too. And we have gone through a lot of environmental regulations, things we have to deal with, things we have to keep, war, to, in, in, in code, or whatever, you know, you want to call it code. But, uh, uh, regulations and inspections, both. I mean, we get inspected state, federal for cow manure, we get inspected for milk quality, just, you know, milk producing. And, and trust me, these inspectors, they're going to be picky because they like their jobs, and they want to keep their jobs, and they're, they're real strict people in what they do. And, 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 and the final, I want to say that we, we've worked with the McLeans for several years now, and I've found them to be very good operators, very professional in how they do business, and they just basically run a first-class organization when anything they're involved in has always, I mean, that's, that's my experience I've found with them, so, thank you.
Someone else wish to speak in favor of this request?
Chairman Norman, Board members, my name is Chris Carter. I live at twenty-four thirty-six Old Moxville Road, and my business is Country Boy Landscape Incorporated, located at four twenty-nine Old Moxville Road. I come here tonight to ask for your support for environment, small business, and agriculture by allowing the construction of the biodiesel facility on Snow Creek Road. I understand through personal experience at my Old Moxville Road facility the importance of proper zoning and the separation of business and residential areas. However, I believe the applicant's current stewardship and the land, along with their current investment of personal residences adjacent to the proposed filthy, facility bear evidence to their relatively low impact on residential and agricultural properties of the proposed facility. The proposed facility will increase overall environmental stewardship and provide economic opportunities for Iredell County. With your approval, Iredell County can take another step forward in leading North Carolina's changing agribusiness landscape, the consequences of improvement, our enhanced environmental stewardship, and economic prosperity. I urge you to support this endeavor. Thank you for your time.
Someone else wish to speak in favor?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name is Dale Brown. I, too, am a fourth-generation farm owner out in that central community. Knew their grandfather, J. Hugh, and Father Harry, and none of these, these guys. This family has set a standard for agriculture way beyond what we've seen in this county before, and the integrity is there. And I honestly believe with them living there, with their attempt to provide a market which is so needed in this community. I know my grandfather operated a mill, a waterwheel mill on, on the river down there, and, which was a market for the grain and the wheat to make flour and so on. And this market for the agriculture community is so needed. I mean, we have a cattle market over there that provides a source for the farmers to sell their cattle. We need a, a market like this to provide a resource locally for grain instead of taking this discount to ship it elsewhere. And with this restricted size that he's taking on here, I, I think it's, it's certainly controllable, and somebody made the comment that he's going to be dealing with chemicals and so on. Well, those guys are dealing with more chemicals every day than, than most anybody else around here. And, and you look at the fields that they, they cultivate, they're beautifully done, they do everything in a first-class manner, and I just want to endorse them, they're, they're here to stay, they, they didn't just arrive yesterday to try to push something over on us. And, and I think our, well, look at tobacco farmers, they're, they're closing down, they're needing other things to do. This will provide another resource that we did not have before for these people to move to, and I appreciate what they're trying to do.
Okay, now, if we can have three people who are in opposition to this request, please come forward and speak.
I'm Lorraine, Lorraine Watt. I'm a landowner in the area. My concern, I'm very much for alternative fuels. I think there's a need, and Iredell County should be involved in this. My concern is because, think about it, it requires all these permits, special tanks, special ditches. ditches, special safety systems. This implies that there's some inherent safety issues with the biodiesel plant. And because of this, I think the appropriate place for this type of plant is not in a residential area, but in an industrial park. And Iredale County has industrial parks, and I think this is where this plant should go. As a resident of the area, I don't have children, but I'm very concerned with the truck traffic. I'm concerned with the school buses. They said trucks would travel from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. That involves all the time, the school buses are on those roads. North Iredale High School's in the area. Excuse me, I'm nervous, shouldn't be nervous, I'm a school teacher. All the teenagers who are learning to drive, there's a lot that travel on Snow Creek, I'm concerned about that. Personally, I'm a bicycle rider. I love North Iredale, I get to go out and ride my bike. I ride that on Snow Creek. I don't want to come around a curb and see one of those tanker trucks. So I'm concerned not just for myself, but other bicyclers, other drivers. And I think I'm very much for this plant, but not in the residential area. I think we can find another place to put it. Thank you.
Someone else wish to speak against this request?
I'm Becky Michaux. I live next to the site. We've heard some experts testify that the dangers are fairly benign. Fairly benign doesn't reassure me. Fairly benign shouldn't reassure anyone. The question is, do we take a chance? Do we take a chance with our children and all our lives? We've had fatalities on our road. I echo the sentiments of Ms. Watt who said she's for the biodiesel fuel plant. I just haven't heard, other than monetary reasons, why we have to have it on our road, why we should. Thank you.
Okay, do we have another speaker who is against this request?
Gentlemen, I'm back again. Gentlemen, I've got some news clips here talking about biodiesel, how dangerous it is. Here's some Idaho news that's caused a new Plymouth biodiesel explosion released at Portland Tribune. Fire put biodiesel under scrutiny. There's two pages of that. Plant fire in Idaho proved deadly for biodiesel. Domestic production of biodiesel health and safety warning. The New York Energy Group says getting serious about safety. But what I want to know is, last count I heard, I'm a member and owner operator in the tire association out of Oak Grove, Missouri. And according to our organization, they've taken a dollar a gallon subsidy from the U.S. government to make these things break even. So that's going to get in my pocket through my taxes. If this thing won't carry itself, why do we need it? Thank you.
Okay, do we have additional people who would like to speak in favor of requests?
My name is Ronnie Wooton. I live at 406 North Chippie Ford Road, which is approximately two miles from the site that we're discussing tonight. I am in favor of granting this petition to the McLean's. I know we've heard a lot of things here tonight, and I think that, you know, on each side, we could probably refute and rebut each one back and forth all night long. But one thing that's for sure is that myself and everybody sitting in here just about are neighbors, and we're going to be neighbors after the vote. But the thing that come down to me making the decision on which side of the room I was sitting on was trust. Mr. Brown, who spoke earlier, alluded to the fact of the type of operation that the McLean's run. And I think that we have to look back at the history of their farm and see what kind of job they've done with their farm. Will they continue that in their new endeavor? I think they will. I know they will. Do we trust them that they'll stay in compliance? Do we trust them that they will run a safe operation? I know that we can, because they are people of integrity, as you've heard several people here tonight allude to. And living within a mile of Phil and Louise and Mike and Janet for the past 30 years, I can tell you that on serving on committees with them and being neighbors with them, that what they say, they will do. They wouldn't have brought you facts tonight that are not true, they wouldn't have brought you facts tonight that are maybes. If you look at the operation that they run, as described in the Record of Landmark and our other weekly paper here in Statesville, you'll see that they do an outstanding job in what they do, they know their facts, and they're prepared when they go into business. So it's with no reservations tonight that I come to you, each of you, and ask you that you support their rezoning request and hope that you'll take that in consideration of your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wooton. Do we have anyone else wish to speak in favor of this request?
Hello, I'm Sam Dobson, representative of Dobson Farms and also the Snow Creek Community. Over 200 years ago, I know my family showed up in the Snow Creek community to establish a vision, establish a vision for their families to provide a place to live and have a farm, to grow families, educate their children, and grow a community, build a church. After the hearing, the testimonies of all the people here tonight, I think the vision is mission accomplished. It was kind of ironic, I was coming home from Washington, D.C. after listening to congressmen talk about alternative fuels and the future of agriculture with words like direct marketing, niche, organic, biotechnology, biopharmaceuticals, biofuels. When I came home, I opened the Statesville Record and Landmark only to see the McLean's farms' proposal for the biodiesel facility. I was very excited to see that the farmers in our community were being proactive in advancing in technology and securing the future of agriculture in our homes. However, as time went by, I heard the concerns of the community as we're hearing tonight, people that mean something to me as a growing up in Snow Creek Church, people that I call friends and call family. So I wanted to look into the situation further myself to make sure the neighbors that I've loved all my life were taken care of. After meeting with Phil McLean at the proposed site and understanding that they were willing to move the facility back to the top of the hill, I was 100% convinced that this site would be safe for our children, our grandchildren, and the future to come. The McLean's always doing a wonderful job, as you've heard the testimony tonight, of going in things planned, and this is no different. As for the changing of agriculture, it's something we all have to change. We've changed with the development that we've seen all over the communities. We deal with it every day with increased traffic and things of that sort. And I just won't sit here and say that there won't be an accident. I won't sit here and say there won't be something that will happen in the future of my lifetime, because if I could tell the future in that way, I'm getting paid a lot more money than I'm getting paid right now, I can assure you of that. But I will say this, that if the communities are willing to work together and adjust to this change, agriculture's changing, and we've got to adjust to this change, and we have to meet these needs to secure this beautiful rural landscape that we've all enjoyed for generations. If our farm families are not allowed to adjust to these concerns and these needs and these markets, then you're going to see a lot more zoning problems than you're seeing tonight. I'm here heavily for the proposed site, and I'm sorry that it's brought concern to our neighborhood, but I know in the future, after this project is complete, that we'll be able to live in harmony and everybody will enjoy the rural infrastructure and the rural life that for generations our families have worked hard to create. Also, before I leave tonight, I think the words heavy industrial and heavy manufacturing are not fair to these proposals, for this proposal. Yes, there'll be some more trucks, but it's not anything in the magnitude that you would see with the Lowe's Distribution Center or something of that sort. I hope in the future that the leadership of our communities and leadership of these counties will set up some zoning for ag business to better help grow in the future of our businesses and families. Thank you so much.
Do we have anyone else wish to speak in favor of this request?
Mr. Chairman, distinguished members of the board, I'm Jeff McNeeley, owner of GNM Milling. We are a manufacturer of livestock feeds, also happen to double as being on the planning board of Idaho County. And I will come to you in two facets and try to come as quick as I can. I really didn't plan to speak on this tonight, you're actually going to hear me on something else later, I hate to tell you that. But first come to you on the manufacturing side of livestock feeds, we're going to bring a product or products a lot closer to the consumers. Idaho County is one of the largest consumer of feedstuffs because we're one of the largest counties that has more cattle than any other county anywhere around. Also, we have probably about as many chickens as almost anywhere around. Unfortunately, most of the facilities that we pull these products, similar to what they're going to make, are in Raleigh, North Carolina, or Kershaw, South Carolina, or other parts of way that are not in our local commerce. I think by keeping these products in our local commerce, we're going to increase our economic development of agriculture and make it more profitable, not just for the McLean's at biodiesel works, but for all people in general that are in agriculture with livestock. And this is very critical, because right now, livestock farmers aren't making much money. And I don't know if you've noticed, but it hadn't rained a whole lot. So the odds are, they're going to make less, and they're going to have to purchase more feedstuffs, and I'm hoping from GNM Milling, but that may not be the case. But in whatever case, these animals have to be fed or be sold. And when the farm animals are sold, the farm goes next, and then development comes. You know, when this case came before me as a planning board member, I felt like, yes, this is a very rural community. But true to what Sam Dobson just said, we probably have some flaws and some loopholes or some places we don't have in our zoning ordinances for agribusiness. And agribusiness is growing in size. It's not shrinking to the small family farm with two cows and somebody's milking it out back in the shed. We've got 1,000 cow dairies in the county. We've got all kinds of things going on in the county far as growth. We're having to get closer to the consumer, we're having to get larger to compete. And this is just one example of a farm that's already fairly large, taking some vertical integration, or excuse me, horizontal integration, to grow even larger to compete. Because we're not just competing in Idaho County, we're not just competing in North Carolina, we're not just competing in the United States, we're competing in the world. And to do that, we're going to have to change the way we think, especially in agriculture. That's basically all I got to say. I am for the zoning.
Thank you, sir. I still have room for three who would like to speak against this request. Do we have anyone wishing to speak against requests that's sworn in?
My name is Jane Burress. I live on Snow Creek Road. Thankfully, I don't live as close as some of the neighbors you've heard tonight speak. I don't have anything prepared, didn't really intend to speak. We've heard of all the profitable, wonderful things, the flowery families that have been there for hundreds of years, mine has too, I was cowin'. I still don't see how you can expect those property owners immediately around there to accept the devalued property that they're going to have. And I don't believe, and I don't think, if you're being honest with yourself, that you can say their property is not going to be greatly devalued. At an informational meeting, Ron Smith himself said he would not want to live beside a biodiesel plant. He also said, had this been in Mooresville, we wouldn't be here tonight because it would have never gotten this far. Jeff or Jen McNeeley, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your first name, and I don't know you personally, but as a member of the planning board, is that not a conflict of interest? That he would profit from it? Should he not have reclusive himself and offered to not only approve it very quickly, if you've read the minutes from the planning board, but to extend the hours, from five days to six days, and from 10 hours to 12 hours? I think that's a conflict of interest, and I do oppose it.
Do I have room for two more speakers who are speaking against the request? Okay. If we have no one else, are you speaking, sir? Okay.
My name is Ed Presley, and I'm presenting the evidence, four of five pages of a petition that has been passed and signed, that reads, "We, the undersigned residents of Snow Creek Road and immediate surrounding area hereby petition that the proposed rezoning of land to heavy manufacturing conditional use be denied," bearing the name, address, telephone number of 138 residents in that area. I'd like to show who all is here to oppose this. For everybody who's here to oppose this, please stand up so we can have a count. We get a count, please, for the record. Seventy-two people. We are not here tonight to vote, the McLean's are good people, they are. We're not here tonight to vote whether the alternate fuels are needed, they are. We're here tonight to decide where the appropriate place in Idaho County should be. You are the gatekeepers, you will decide where this biodiesel manufacturing facility will be sited. One is going to come, do we decide to put it into an R-20 zoning, the most restrictive zoning we have in Idaho County, and place it in an M2 zoning district, which is the least restrictive, from one end to the next polar end? Do we put that in an R-20, or do we put it into an industrial site? There's been testimony, you've heard evidence tonight, that there are plenty of industrial sites here where this can go. If it's placed in an industrial site, all of the same positive considerations that have been talked about tonight, first starting out by the engineers and the experts, and then by the people who have studied this and the farmers who want it, all those apply, all those will still be served if this is sited in an industrial area. If you allow this request, eight acres in the middle of whatever Randy's count was, 39,000 acres, you're going to constitute what the law calls a spot zoning. Spot zoning is defined by, A, is the entity owned by a single ownership, you've got the McLean family, and it is. B, will your action free the McLean's in this area of restrictions that now restrict the neighbors? That's favoritism. That is, could Jerry Michaux on the east, Bill Pitt on the southeast, Bill Leach on the east, Randy Bridges on the south, could they come to you next week and put up their own plant? They couldn't because they're restricted against it. Your action here, if you allow the McLean's to do it, is favoritism. This law is designed so that a board cannot feather the nest of its own selective friends. The third element is the site sought to be rezoned, eight acres in this instance, surrounded by uniformly zoned area. And in this case, it is, it's R-20, it's the most restricted zoning that we have again in the county. The McLean's led the fight for the R-20 classification, and they got it. Improper zoning will be struck down by our court system if it passes here, it's been done in Davie County, next door, Davidson County, next door.
You have a time, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I have room for one more speaker who would like to speak against this request? Just one in? Okay, at this time, we're gonna take a five-minute recess. And we will be back in in five minutes. Folks, at this time, at this time, we're going to give the commissioners a chance to ask questions. We'll go for a little while, give each one a chance to ask questions. Next, we'll give Mr. Presley four minutes to ask any questions he'd like to ask. Then, Mr. McLean, you'll have four minutes to ask any questions to anyone you'd like to ask also. Okay, at this time, I will start off with the commissioners. If you have questions, this is the time to ask. We'll be calling people up, so please don't interrupt when those folks are speaking. Thank you. I'll start with you, Mr. Johnson.
All right. Mr. McLean, could I? One of the Mr. McLean's, could they step back to the podium? I got a question, please. During the course of previous discussion, someone mentioned the fact that they may be willing to locate this facility 500 feet from the nearest, was that from the property line or the nearest neighboring residence?
It's 500 from the nearest property line. It's even further from residence.
Okay. Very well, Mr. Chairman. There's been a lot of talking going on, and I'm running down through my notes. I'd like to, I got a couple of questions that, Mr. McLean, you can choose which one of your expert witnesses you have with you be the most appropriate to respond to this. But the question I have is, the last few days, I've read more biodiesel fuel than anything else. One of the safety measures that I encountered is a nitrogen blanket. Has either one of your experts ever heard of this process? And could they describe it to me, what their assessment of it is? Is it worthwhile?
I'll ask Mr. Rayleigh to speak to that.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, it is. A nitrogen blanket is a, is a, is a change in the natural atmosphere above one of these chemicals substances by introduction of nitrogen, which is a, which is a natural inert. It's a, it's a completely non-reactive material. And the purity of those streams is typically 99.9% nitrogen and argon.
Okay, and the intent of that is to keep down vapors from the methanol, is that right?
That is to prevent a flammable mixture of material to be in the inexistence in the vapor space above the liquid.
Okay, yeah, that's my understanding, okay. Do you think that that's a good enough idea to incorporate it into this facility? And if you don't, why not? Don't mean to worry you out, but I'll, I'll tell you what I'm doing.
No, sir. I mean, that's a fair question. It will be incorporated in this facility.
Okay.
It's a standard engineering practice.
Okay. Do you think that a nitrogen blanket is necessary in this type of operation? What I've, what I've come to understand, there's certainly more than one process by which you can make biodiesel fuel. Is this, is this incorporated into this? Is it necessary? And if your opinion it's not necessary, then why is it not necessary?
It's, it's my professional opinion that it is, that it is necessary and it is normally incorporated into, to any design that our company would, would, would be proposing for this type of storage system.
Have you ever heard of a company called FM Global Insurance?
Yes, Factory Mutual Global. Yes, sir.
Okay. What, what's your knowledge of them?
They're a insurance underwriter, sir. They would underwrite the, the insurance of a facility like this.
What's your opinion of their requirements?
They, their, their requirements are typical, typically industry standards. In my professional opinion, some of their hazards, hazard analysis studies are based upon outdated information that is, that is sometimes incorrect. But it is required, it is a, it is a requirement of the insurance industry. They're a consultant to the insurance industry.
I, I understand. The engineering world's full of opinions. There's, there's an old saying about engineers. If you ask them for their phone number, they'll give you an estimate. Let me ask you another thing. How about a methanol detector? Are there any?
There is, there is such a thing as a combustible gas detector that's based upon infrared or ultraviolet light sensing systems.
Is that incorporated in the design of this facility?
Typically not.
Why not?
Typically not required.
You think that's an unnecessary expense, or do you think it could add to the safety of the process?
Typical, typical, Mr. Johnson, the requirements for those types of safety systems are dictated by the insurance underwriters rather than local, local fire marshal requirements.
Okay. I'll let you off the hook for the time being, but I reserve the right to call you back. How's that?
Couldn't watch too much period TV.
Go ahead.
Got one question I'd like to ask. I'd like to ask Lord Ramsey, if you could press one. Fire marshal.
Yes, sir.
In case of a fire at this facility, which fire department will respond for first call?
First alarm will go to Trinity Fire Department.
Do they have a mutual assistance pack with who?
Yes, absolutely. We've got automatic aid for this type fire. You'd have Central, Trinity, Central, probably Harmony and Ebenezer will be the next two.
How many gallons water does Trinity, can they provide from this location?
Are you saying haul? I mean, how much can they haul to the scene?
Right.
I would say Trinity could probably put 6,000 gallons on the scene. And that's, I don't know that exactly, but I would say probably 6,000 gallons.
Is that adequate for a fire of this type, what you could expect from something like this?
Well, that's hard to say because I don't know sizes, quantities, you know, that type thing. Probably to completely extinguish this type fire, probably not. But that's, like I said, there's a lot of information about quantities and size and that type stuff that I don't have yet.
Would that be from a single hydrant there, or would that be from multiple hydrants?
Oh, it would be definitely a water haul type operation. I think the hydrants in that area, just kind of rough figuring. I talked to the chief up there, and he said that area generally, they're looking at what he felt were like 750, 800 gallons a minute.
Would a turbo draft on, on this facility, would that help if that, if that was, if it was located at a pond on the site?
If it was accessible enough, it, it would certainly be a help, yes. I, I don't know how accessible this pond is, but yeah, it could be.
Okay, thank you, Lloyd.
All right. Most of these questions are gonna be for Mr. McLean and his, come on, bat a cup and get comfortable, I think. It's probably appropriate. Okay, all right. Questions aren't necessarily grouped by subject, so, so excuse me if I jump around a little bit. So, Mr. McLean, you may tag team some of these. I, I just don't want, don't want y'all thinking you're done at the podium for a while here. What do we have here? A batch or a continuous process?
We have a combination. We have a batch process at the front of the facility that is a transisterification reaction without water wash, minimal wastewater from the facility, followed by a continuous methanol recovery and, and ion exchange cleanup of the biodiesel material.
Okay, so, all right, so it's a, it's a?
It's a semi-continuous process, batch in the front, continuous in the back.
Okay, Roger that. The, the methanol is gonna be mixed with the catalyst prior, prior to mixing with the oil, correct? When do you put the catalyst in?
Last.
Put the catalyst in after the two have been mixed together?
After the mixtures, yes.
When the, when the, the methanol isn't preheated then, correct?
The, the, the methanol is, is batch fed to the, to the reactor along with, you know, following the, the RBD, the triglyceride, the oil. And then catalyst is last, and then the resulting contents are brought up to 60 degrees centigrade for the reaction to occur. And it's an endothermic, it's a, the, the reaction consumes heat. You take heat away, it stops.
Okay, so the methanol is never heated up alone?
No.
And that's when methanol is most combustible and would create the highest pressures, is if, if you were to heat it up alone?
That's correct.
Okay, what sort of pressures are we looking at in your reactor vessel?
Atmospheric pressure.
Okay, so?
Or, or lower, because, because the, the resulting materials are removed under vacuum.
Okay, all right, so we don't have a pressurized vessel that's likely to go boom, then?
No, sir. And it, and it has, it's an ASM, it's an American Society of Mechanical Engineers coded vessel with, with the specific safety relief devices on it to keep it from, from, from overpressuring.
Okay, all right, the methanol is tip, there's, there's usually some? Okay, all right, the methanol is typ, there's usually some residual methanol in the glycerin byproduct. You say you're going to be running an ion exchange, you're going to put it through a continuous membrane-
Methanol's recovered from the biodiesel material post-reaction and post-separation of the glycerin. And then the biodiesel is cleaned with a resin that absorbs residual catalyst salt, a trace of glycerin, a trace of triglyceride that's there, to make a product that can be put in engines.
Okay, all right, so the glycerin byproduct that has to be, it's a byproduct, it's not a waste, because it can be-
It's a byproduct that is very commonly used in the cosmetics industry, it's an edible material. It does have methanol in it when it exits the reactor, and that is removed as part of the process. But then the resulting crude glycerin would then be re-refined to recover it at another location.
Right, so will that stored glycerin have, I mean, what sort of methanol content would be in it at that time?
It's actually removed, Mr. Robertson, prior to storage.
Okay, so there is none at storage?
No, sir.
That was my question. This facility is going to, the plan is to use soybeans, hopefully in the future, it's supposed to convert over to some higher yielding oil seed stocks like sunflower, canola, but also oils or fats or whatever from, as animal byproducts are going to be used as a source material in this facility as well, correct?
Any triglycer, any fat can be used as a raw material. The raw material design right now is for soybean oil, canola oil, sunflower seed oil, but with proper pretreatment, yes. Animal fat could be used, yellow grease.
And those require a different manufacturing process?
It's same manufacturing process, but they may have, they may require initial removal of what's called free fatty acids prior to the introduction into the reaction. It makes too much water and messes up the catalyst.
Okay.
If those materials are allowed to stay in there, not typically done.
Okay, so you've made accommodations to run two different, basically to have a pretreatment if you're running animal fats?
Yes.
Okay, all right. What limits your capacity? You know, we've heard the figure now tonight of six million gallons. You know, usually there's a choke point or a bottleneck that makes that a six million gallon annual facility. What is that bottleneck in this process?
Human resources and handling. The reaction can only occur so fast. You can only put so much material into this size reactor, which is about five thousand gallons capacity. And really, six million gallons a year is a real stretch. Complete utilization of the equipment at hand.
Okay, so it's the reactor vessel, then?
It is.
Okay, and the only way they could push more volume through there is if we got twenty-six hours in a day?
Or more reactors, or, yes, or create-
Or if they operated on Sunday?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, so as long as they're operating in hours that are defined, then that six million is a max?
That is an absolute max, yes, sir.
All right, Mr. McLean, I'm not done, hang close to the podium. Mr. McLean, for you to put out, to put through a million, for you to make a million gallons of biodiesel, and let's assume you're not using any animal fats, how many acres of soybeans would it take to get you to a million gallons a year?
More than we could buy. Five hundred thousand bushels would give us about seven hundred thousand gallons. So we're going to start out very slow, and we would have to buy soybeans from adjoining counties. Canola would double the amount of oil that we would get, so you would get twice the oil per canola acre as you would soybeans, so I could double that if we purchased only canola, but we would be able to purchase everything.
Right now, is canola and sunflowers, those aren't common crops in this area?
They're not common. We have grown them, and we're growing them now.
Okay, so for you to go to maximum capacity right now, that means that you would need three hundred thousand bushels a year of soybeans, correct?
To go to maximum?
Right.
Probably three hundred million.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Because it, half a million, half a million bushels.
You said five hundred thousand bushels to get you seven hundred thousand gallons. Okay, okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
But it's still-
It's more than we'll be able to do. You can figure just a little over a gallon per bushel soybean. So if you want six million gallons, you're going to have to have about five million bushels.
Okay, all right, I'm with you now.
And we raise about thirty or forty million bushels in North Carolina. And that's not exact, that's the ballpark.
So the chances of you going to six million gallons a year output-
Very unlikely.
Okay, but if you used a mixture of soybeans and other seed oils?
Still very unlikely.
Okay, and then what about adding the animal fat?
Now, the animal fat would make it more likely, but the good thing about the animal fat is it cuts way down on the trucking, because you're bringing the oil in, and you don't have all that processing that's going on. And another thing about the animal fat, we're not rendering animal carcasses. It's already been refined before we get it. There isn't hardly any smell associated with that.
What temperature is the reactor would run at with, if you're running-
Sixty degrees C or one hundred and forty degrees Fahrenheit.
Okay, all right, so what sort of odors that you would expect to come from if you're using animal fat or whatever? Do you, what sort of odor issue would there be inside the plant? And what sort of methods would you use to keep that from going outside of the plant?
There would be none. The resulting vapors are processed under vacuum, and they're run through a solid scrubber. There is a sealed liquid system on the vacuum pumps that generates three to four gallons an hour of water that is a sealed fluid, but it's under very high vacuum.
Okay, so the off gases, the off gases-
The off gases are scrubbed.
Which is basically a distillation column.
They're absorbed on carbon.
Okay, all right. Are there any plans for lab facilities on-site to make sure that the process is running as designed?
Yes, we are talking about doing that. There are certain things that we can do in a small amount, and until we get the lab there, we can hire it out there, labs locally that we can use. But we will have to do that, because we have to produce an ASTM fuel.
Okay. The process that has animal fats has higher free fatty acids, and that usually means you got to remove a lot more water. The ion exchange still can handle the process at that point?
Yes, it can.
Okay, so we're still, so no matter what your feedstock is, we don't have a wastewater issue as far as, you know, big septic tanks or pumping trucks of-
No, it would be, it would be a material that would be pumped and hauled. It will have to be characterized, because I'm sure we would talk to the Statesville Sewer District about possible discharge there, but it's a pump and haul situation.
I spilt my water on my notes, so we're a little bit blurry here for the second. Okay, I got a letter from somebody, and they asked about the sulfuric acid and the process. The only place I could find that in the literature was that was used as a neutralizer. Y'all have that in your process? Okay.
Well, maybe I can address that. We typically use glycolic acid, which is strong vinegar-
Right.
-for quenching and killing the process and neutralizing the salt.
Okay, and that's all recovered in your ion exchange?
That's all gone in the reaction system.
Okay, all right, that's my question.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
I was just going to, well, Statesville, have you got documentation for Statesville to accept the wastewater?
No, sir, we haven't approached that point of the operation yet. That would be with a permitting process with the Dean and the Natural Resources and Aqua First, and we haven't gone to that process yet. Philip may have maybe answered that.
Just tell them how small the wastewater will be.
Well, yeah, the wastewater only that got to the system is basically the one to four gallons of an hour out of the vacuum cooling system. The reaction is basically, all the water is consumed or it's within a process. If we use a catalyst that's a quote-unquote a thirty percent sodium methylate methoxide catalyst, there is no reaction water. A little bit of water, if anybody's familiar with parts per million, twenty, a hundred parts per million is a lot of water. Five hundred is typically what comes, five hundred parts per million, which is very little BBs in a big boxcar.
I believe this board wrote on a process recently where the same question came up about how would we want to dispose of the wastewater? Same response was that Statesville was going to, it was going to be entered into the Statesville system. Suppose they won't accept it, even though it may only be fifty-five gallons. Where is it going?
Well, then it has to be addressed with Mr. McLean wants to hold it off as typically as a T-ox in a has-way system somewhere, or somebody else wants to take it.
Do you know where the biodiesel plant in Lenore, where theirs goes? Their waste?
No, I do not know that. But to address the water issues, or Mr. Williams, would be that we'd have to address, when the permitting process for the plant, we'd have to approach the city of Statesville or the county of Iredale and see if they would accept the waste. If not, then another option would have to be pursued.
But that would be, you would have to have that in order before it can be permitted, what you're saying?
Yes, sir. You cannot build a facility without somebody accepting the waste or air permits or whatever.
Ms. Thon?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Mr. Pressley a question. If this project was moved five hundred feet up the hill from the property line, would that be more acceptable to your clients?
Mr. Pressley, you need to go to the mic, please.
Not amount of the distance there. The distance won't control the amount of traffic. It's still uphill from these neighbors. These methanol products are all heavier than air, they flow downhill to the neighbors. The same issues with regard to water quality, the five bus routes in the morning coming, the five bus routes in the evening coming. So it's still in sight, you still have the same property value loss. This exhibit that was introduced into evidence every time a homeowner sells his house, he has to go through this checklist, and there are two numbers there where you've got to disclose that, well, I live next to this plant, and it affects the quality of life here.
Thank you. I was serving on the board in nineteen ninety-eight when the county commissioners approved a request from this neighborhood to rezone this property to R-20 to guarantee that this type operation would not infiltrate their community. How do you feel about that?
Well, we've heard a whole lot about the technology and about the system itself, but really no reason to put it here. The minutes reflected, the planning board, Mr. McLean wanted to use it because there was a barn there that he wanted to use, didn't want to have to replace his building. Well, if you're talking about moving distance beyond that barn, then that desire is gone. If the only reason is to let him use his own property, he bought this farm to farm, and he's been farming it. Why can't he go to an industrial site and put this same plant up? I mean, as I read the minutes, the planning board, the minutes of the nineteen ninety-eight rezoning, the McLean family was instrumental in getting it zoned to the R-20, most restrictive we have. And yet here, how ironic it is, they come back and ask for the least ironic, and it gives them, again, as property owners, privileges to do something, to generate money on their property that the neighbors cannot do. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Robinson, you have a few more questions?
Yeah, from Mr. McLean. Why don't you build, put this in an industrial park?
That's a very good question. We have limited funds to do, to purchase the land and the buildings, the existing buildings that we already have, it would be in excess of a million and a half dollars. There's more than just a barn at concern here. There are several buildings. There are some upright silos that are glass-lined, that are airtight, that can be used for storage of the oil. There's a huge barn there that we can put the meal in. There's the grain bins there that store the grain. It would cost in excess of a million and have to build that, and to purchase the land also. This is private venture. We don't have, we've applied for some money, but the money didn't come through as far as the grants, the grant money that we applied for. That's why we had the initial delay. We thought we could maybe get some grant money and take it somewhere else. When we found out that that wasn't possible, then we had to come back to this site. For us not to be able to do it at this location, we will not be able to do this project. So it's not about a vote of whether it moves somewhere or not, it's really a vote about whether it's done or not. And that's the biggest reason. And could I speak to some of the comments that were mentioned just now? Would that be out of line?
Not at this time. We will go ahead and continue the questioning process, okay?
Okay.
You can, lady, you'll have four minutes.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any additional questions for Mr. McLean or anyone else?
I don't want to be laborious, Mr. Chairman, but I need somebody to go with me one more time about the byproducts of this, the glycerin or whatever that is, and explain to me. I've been getting bits and pieces of it. I see you wagging your head, I'm just a dumb old county commissioner, and I'm kind of slow, aren't I?
No, sir. The byproducts of this process are glycerin. And glycerin is typically handled, it's a raw material used in soap products, lotions, it's ingestible, it's used in making everything from suppositories to face creams.
Probably more information than I needed.
Well, you ask the engineer. But it has to be refined.
That wasn't an estimate.
It has to be refined first. It cannot be used in its raw form.
Okay. I appreciate your patience with us, I do.
And I need to respond to that also, because he's talking about the biodiesel portion of it. There's really two phases here. There's the soybean and canola processing, and that's where the majority of the byproducts are coming from. So from soybeans, eighty percent of it is soybean meal, the rest of it's oil. So we'll be selling that eighty percent into the community, and so that is also a byproduct too, that's separate from the biodiesel.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Will there be any additional questions from anyone else? Okay, Mr. Pressley, you have four minutes to ask questions.
Should I have a personal care?
Mr. Pressley, you need to go to the mic, please.
The proposal allows seven AM to seven PM Monday through Saturday, is that correct?
Yes.
And the proposal by the McLeans at the planning department was seven AM to five PM Monday through Friday, is that correct?
I believe the number has changed, I can't say exactly what it was.
All right, the minutes that are attached to this will reflect that, is that correct?
I think so.
All right, and this proposal says no animal rendering will take place on the property. Does that mean that no animal parts will be used if this is allowed?
The fat that they're proposing to bring in would not be, I don't know the word, rendered on the property from a carcass to the actual fat that would be used in the facility.
All right, and this proposal does not identify any fire extinguishing system yet, is that correct?
That's correct.
It's something that has to be figured out later?
Yes, sir.
All right. It doesn't limit the number of storage tanks, is that correct?
That's correct.
Doesn't limit the number of buildings that can go up?
Correct.
Doesn't limit the size of the facility?
No.
Dykes come with it? Dykes come with it, and that just controls liquids. Is that correct?
That's correct, unless there's some other regulation from the Fire Marshal's office that we're not aware of.
Okay, dykes are immaterial with regard to gas flows?
That's probably a question for the, one of the other experts.
The travel, the removal of the driveway is not identified. Is that correct, where that's going to go?
We have a letter on record from NCDOT, and they have worked out a proposed location, but it's not specifically designated in this.
All right, and that's just for the entrance onto, to the road itself?
Yes, sir.
And, and it has no regulation about how far away the drive will be moved from the neighbor. Is that correct?
The only requirement would be the thirty-foot undisturbed buffer in which the driveway could not be located.
All right. When you get to a thirty-foot undisturbed buff, buffer, your code just says you don't do anything with it. Isn't that right?
Correct.
And right now, it's cleared land.
There, adjacent to the Leeches property, the, the driveway is in, is in that buffer, yes.
All right, so that, so that doesn't work, doesn't allow for the planting of any screening, any plants, anything of that nature?
You can put that in the buffer. That's a requirement that we would have in addition to that. The buff, a buffer is spacing, and screening is an actual visual.
Okay, well, your screening regulation calls for six-foot chain-linked fence.
Well, actually, there, there is, it should be six feet in vegetation or a, an opaque fence or a berm or some combination.
Okay. The regulations are, deal with industrial sites, don't they?
And I've pulled these from an industrial section of this ordinance, yes.
All right. Is it true that there's no industrial site such as this that's been put into a residential area anywhere in Iredel County?
Not a biodiesel. We do have other M2 properties in, in the middle of large residential areas. We do.
All right, and when's the last time that was done?
We had one earlier this year, several months ago, I believe.
South Iredel area?
No, in north Iredel, north of here.
What was that?
On Friendship Road.
A what?
Sawmill.
Okay. When you give your recommendations to the board, do you use precedence on those recommendations?
In many cases, yes. They're, they're all case-by-case basis.
All right, and what would be your response if one of these neighbors wants to put a similar facility on their own property?
We would review it on, you know, on the merits of that individual case.
All right, and if it came up with, equally with this, then you would give it an equal recommendation?
If, if, if the situation arose that it was the same as, as this in all ways, yes, but otherwise, we'd have to consider it case-by-case.
The land use plan now is in effect. Is that correct?
Correct.
And, and land use plan has this area designated for what?
Residential.
Mr. Pressley, your time's up. Mr. McLean?
Have no questions, but I do have quite a few statements. This really isn't what everybody's afraid of. It's much smaller in scale than what people realize. It does not pose the threat and danger that people want to assume. You can pull off internet articles and read about explosions in Idaho, in Oregon. My, my experts reviewed those, and what happened was because people were doing things that were not on the same scale as what we're going to build. A lot of homebrews are being done, and things are happening, and mistakes are being made because people aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing. We are going to do what we're supposed to do. We're going to do everything within our power to give whatever setbacks, to do whatever greenery, to make it as invisible in the community as we can possibly make it. We're moving it up the hill. It's going to cost us more money to do that, because we're going to have to build a building now that we already had existing. We were willing to make that as a concession. It's going to go up there between two other buildings, and you're hardly going to be able to see it. The tanks that we were going to erect are much smaller than the silos that remain there now. So as far as I appeal to the neighbors, they're not going to see much difference. The truck traffic is not going to be as heavy as everybody thinks that it's going to be. We're going to add thirteen trucks to the road if we go to six million gallons, but we've made it clear, we don't know if we'll ever get halfway there. Frankly, if we can get to a million, I think we've done pretty good, but I have to go to the extreme limit so that if something happened very good, then we would be well within what we're supposed to do here. We want to be good neighbors, and so we're going to do all those things. The methanol scares everybody to death, but my experts here will attest to the fact that the propane tanks that we have in our yards to heat our houses are more explosive than what we're going to put on our farm, and we're going to have much more protection around them than what we have around the propane tanks in our own yard. You open a valve, and you start a flame. We don't do that in this process. We're not hitting any flame on that, so it's much, much safer. It's unfortunate that this has to be classified as M2. This is not an M2 classification, but we didn't have anything else that we could classify under. And as you've heard tonight and other testimonies, we need to have a classification for agribusiness can do the things that they need to do, and so it was unfortunate that we had to come to this type of application that doesn't really describe it, and I hope that the commissions or the planning department will look at a different use in the future so that agriculture will have the opportunity to do the things that they need to do. Another thing that was mentioned, they, people seem to look back at our past history as far as zoning in the community, and, and why have you changed your mind, or why did you lead the battle in that? Again, when we tried to help with the, and, and we didn't lead the battle in either one of these skirmishes that we had in the past. We joined them. I didn't lead it. My brother didn't lead it. We just joined on. It was a zoning issue to try to help protect our community, but again, the zoning wasn't exactly what we really needed for our community. You had to either go this side or that side, so we went this way. And yes, everybody will have the same opportunity to rezone their property just like I have, and if it's a good thing to do, then they'll get to do what they want to do. If it's bad, then I, they won't get to do it either, and so we all have the same opportunity here, no matter how it's zoned. So that's basically in a nutshell. All I wanted to say, except that we are fourth-generation farmers, and we love the Snow Creek Road community. We have more invested in that community and more to lose by devaluing properties than anybody else in this room. We've been there for over a hundred years. My grandfather owned that property, and my parents owned the property over the hill, and we were blessed that we could buy it back after my family had to sell it because our grandparents went into the rest home. So we have it back, and it's beautiful out there, ladies and gentlemen, because we've worked hard to buy it back at development prices. And it's only beautiful out there now because we bent over backwards to buy it. If we hadn't have bought it, there would probably be a hundred to two hundred houses on it right now, and that would put more than sixteen more vehicles on the road, I can assure you. And there are other things that we can do if we don't get to do this. You know, I, we could, we could build other things that would involve animals, that would involve waste, and would involve more trucking. What we propose here is...
Your time's up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Could I ask Mr. McLean one question?
Sure.
Mr. McLean, we're still in the process of making our mind up here, but to lay the concerns of your neighbors. You said that you, you don't see any way you'll ever get to six million gallons. Would you consider that as a further condition, that you would limit your operation to six million gallons?
We would do that.
Okay, thanks, sir.
I, I've, I've got one question, but it doesn't have to be Mr. McLean. I don't know if we have anybody from the Ag Center here. Is Ken Vaughn or Mike Miller? Okay. I, I, I'm not trying to make you...
He's here.
Who?
Evening to Mr. Vaughn.
Mr. Vaughn? Mr. Vaughn, would you mind coming and answering a question or two? No, he's, he's not sworn in. He's not sworn in? There you go. Mr. Vaughn, you need to get sworn in. And, and ask this question and hope, hope it doesn't get twisted out of context, but when, when we put fertilizers and pesticides on our crops, are those, are those materials that are basically hazardous if they are, if they come in contact with humans in the wrong quantities?
Can they cause a problem?
Yes.
All of your pesticides, which would include herbicides, insecticides, et cetera, that are used for crop, are supposed to be, and I think our farmers are responsible, to use at recommended rates or approved rates, and therefore do not present that type of problem. If they're used excessive, or in some cases, there is a withdrawal period before harvest, say thirty days, sixty days, or something like that. Assuming the regulations are followed, the labels followed, then there should not be a problem.
Is it safe to say that most of our large-scale agricultural operations have pesticides that are stored on-site?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and they're transported on-site?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Are there any additional questions from the commissioners? If not, this time I'd go ahead and entertain a motion.
Can I get a clarification? So, so we've modified, we've modified the con, the conditional use to... Wait a minute. Hold on a second. I did have one, I, if I can have an alibi here. On, on-site, I'm sorry, outside storage of, of, of waste, can, the gly, the glycer, were y'all going to store the, the, the glycerin waste by, or the byproduct of glycerin? Was that going to be stored in fifty-five gallon drums, or was that going to be in a tank and pumped from a tank to a truck tank for transport for further processing?
Yes, it's proposed to be stored in a bulk tank to be hauled off by truck.
Okay.
My understanding is there's no fifty-five gallon drum storage on-site of the glycerin product.
Okay, so then it, so then it would be consistent if we said no, no outside storage in, in drums as a condition of, of use? That would be consistent with what you've got planned, correct?
That would be consistent with a typical process, yes.
Okay, all right. And how do we go, how are these different conditions that have been added tonight? How, how, how are these things going to be worded? I know that we've run into trouble doing that before.
It'd be a part of your motion.
Yeah, you could, you could make a motion with the conditions as presented by the staff with the following conditions, and you can add as many conditions as you like. You can remove conditions, or if that's your desire is to...
But they have to be accepted.
One of the conditions you mentioned is moving it back five hundred foot.
Yes.
Isn't that correct?
Yes.
And it is agreed to the six million gallons. Is that correct?
Yes, and we would be willing to go even lower than six million if it would make a difference.
Okay.
We would be willing to lower it to four million gallons. We're trying to work with you.
We appreciate.
Do you have a question, Mr. Vaughn?
Mr. Mayor, I must ask you another question. What's Robert's?
We talked about the driveway being moved.
Yes.
How, how does that get worded?
Well, we have that in here now. Let's see. Oh, let me read it out. The gravel driveway shall be located in accordance with the requirements of NCDOT and will be moved to the west from its current location. And they've, they've designated a, a spot that they feel is adequate for the relocation of the driveway. DOT being there.
Should we put a, a number of feet on that, or are we not prepared to do that?
If we put the condition in place, and it's not necessarily where they have designated, then we could potentially have problems.
So if we said to DOT specifications, that would be adequate, or would that be, not add any value?
I, I think it would be adequate primarily based on the fact that they issue driveway permits and have the ultimate authority as to where that would go anyway.
Would that be in the... Mr. Pope, additional conditions, would that be in the first part of the motion or the second part?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I know we don't look like what we're doing up here, but one thing that has, I think everybody I've served with will have to agree, that rulings on legislation that permit us to talking to petitioners or opponents to conditional use district prior to the public hearing make our job extremely more difficult. We can find a very sharp learning curve and whatever we can get on our own. I know that some people I spoke with were offended that, I wouldn't speak to them. I heard fellow commissioners make similar statements, that folks were offended because we, they felt we wouldn't take the time to talk to them. We are legally bound by statute not to do so. Makes it more difficult on the front end of trying to gather information, and makes it difficult to craft a motion because you're having to cut bait as you fish up here, and it's a difficult process.
Robinson, are you ready?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to amend the Iredel County Land Use Plan.
Aye. You heard that motion? Have questions regarding that motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay. I have it for one. Second motion.
Okay. I think the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment and to make a finding that approval is consistent with the adopted Iredel County Land Use Plan and that said approval is reasonable and in the public interest due to its consistency with the Iredel County Land Use Plan. As a result, said approval furthers the goals and objectives of the Iredel County Land Use Plan. And additionally... And additionally, and additionally, the, the following conditional uses are added to this, to this, uh, motion, is that the, the facility be located at least five hundred feet from the nearest property adjacent, uh, property line, that the facility be limited to four million gallons of biodiesel fuel per year, that no outside storage of waste products in drums be allowed, and that the driveway be moved from its current location to a, a location that is west and would meet North Carolina Department of Transportation specifications. I think we've got them all.
All right, you've heard the motion. Do we have questions from board members? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No, and Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd just like to say the reason that I can't vote for the motion is because there was an agreement among the neighbors to protect their property with a non-owner's petition back in nineteen ninety-eight and to rezone this property to R twenty, and the county commissioners, um, voted to approve this action in nineteen ninety-eight, so I can't in good conscience, um, tell these folks now that, um, that was all in vain.
Amen.
Okay. Mr. Smith, next, next.
Well, Mr. Mr. Norman, if I may say something, uh, and I, I didn't vote like Ms. Tice just a second ago, but I'll congratulate her on her consistency. Uh, I think she's to be commended in that, but I, I feel like I've also been consistent. As the McLeans will tell you, in nineteen ninety-eight, I bated against the R twenty. And the reason I bated against it, because I thought it infringed upon other people's personal property rights. And, uh, a statement was made a few minutes ago that all the discussion has been about what's economically feasible and operational techniques. Well, those things are relevant. If you're of the opinion that I am, that someone should be allowed to do on the property whatsoever they choose, as long as they can demonstrate that they do not infringe upon personal property rights or someone else, and in the absence of the opponent's ability to demonstrate that they would be harmed by it. So, uh, I'm still friends with Ms. Tice, I congratulate her, she's been consistent, but honestly feel that I've been no less consistent. They'll say a lot of things about me when I leave here, but one thing they'll say, I do believe in personal property rights.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Well, I guess, uh, in answer to my friend's remarks over here, and we are good friends, uh, that is my feeling. I'm very much, uh, in favor of individual property rights, and I feel like that's why the neighbors came together back in nineteen ninety-eight to, uh, protect their property. And again, I certainly, um, I certainly, uh, agree that, that Mr. Johnson has a right to his opinions.
Thank you. Not men in the bubble, ma'am, just as a clerk. Yeah, Mr. Smith, we are ready for the next case.
Okay, we'll shut up.
Thank you. The next request that we have tonight is from Sumat LLC, who is represented by Alex Modi. It's located at twenty-one fifty-nine Old Mountain Road. This is at the corner of Old Mountain and Island Ford Roads. The request is to go from RA to NB, Neighborhood Business. Mr. Modi would like to rezone, okay. He'd like to rezone a relatively small piece. It's under two thousand square feet, and it is the panhandle portion of a lot that's, that is broken into two districts, NB and RA. This is a very minor request. There's been a lot of new development in this vicinity, commercial development. It's within a, a commercial node with the land, as, as depicted on the land use plan, and both the staff and the planning board have recommended approval. To the north of this property is the new Food Lion, uh, to the south is a new Dollar General, and there are several, uh, red, non-residential uses in the area. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Have any questions for Mr. Smith? Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith.
And Mr. Modi's here tonight, but I don't think he has anything that he wants to say.
Okay, do we have anyone else here who wishes to speak in favor or against this request? Okay. Uh, if no one's here to speak against or in favor, uh, I will entertain a motion from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the zoning map amendment, to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the adopted county land use plan and that said approval is reasonable in the public interest due to its consistency with the county land use plan. As a result, said approval furthers the goals and objectives of the county land use plan.
Okay. You heard the motion from Mr. Robinson. Do we have any questions regarding the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise. I have it. Mr. Smith?
This next request is submitted by James Edmiston Jr., Ethel Edmiston, Ann Edmiston, and Mary Tolbert. This is located on Amity Hill Road at the intersection with Murdoch Road. It also butts up to I forty on the rear. Property is requested to be z- rezoned from RA to HB, Highway Business, and does lie within a commercial node as depicted by our land use plan and the City of Statesville's plan as well. This area is in transition, as you all know, and a good bit of commercial activity is now taking place. Property is currently vacant, although there are no plans for the development of it. Chances are, any major development would take place under the City of Statesville's jurisdiction, uh, probably would require water and sewer. It's a fairly steep piece. This is looking at the property. You can see drops off into a pretty big gully, and that's a car on seventy, on seventy-seven. That's looking up Amity Hill and up Murdoch towards Troutman. Uh, this is another one that we feel is, um, a reasonable request and are recommending in, in favor, as did the planning board.
Any questions for Mr. Smith? Have anyone wishing to speak in favor or against this request?
I'd speak in favor if it's necessary, or if there are any questions.
Okay.
I'm Jimmy Edmiston.
Jim, Jim Edmiston.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, anybody have any questions for Mr. Edmiston? Thank you, sir, appreciate it. This time I'd be glad to entertain a motion from...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the zoning map amendment, make a finding that the approval is consistent with the adopted county land use plan, that said approval is reasonable and in the public interest due to its consistency with the Arndale County Land Use Plan. As a result, said approval furthers the goals and objectives of the county land use plan.
Okay. You heard the motion. Do we have any questions from the board? All those in favor of the motion, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise. I have it.
This next request is submitted by Anita Ri- Anita Johnson. It's located at twenty-three seventy Shelton Avenue. Uh, this is, uh, pretty much equidistant between Statesville and Troutman. The proposed request is to go from RA and NB to R eight A, which is a multifamily district, and NBCUD. There are some conditions, this is a conditional use request. Uh, the conditions are that we would permit all uses in R eight A and NB except for service stations with or without gas. Stubout, road stubouts would be required, would be provided on both sides to adjacent property owners. The RPO standards, roadway protection overlay, would be implemented on the front portion of the property. All parking for the business uses would be in the side and rear of the proposed buildings, and there would be only two driveway cuts, uh, allowed onto Shelton Avenue. Property is twenty-one, a little over twenty-one acres, and is currently zoned on the front. It's about two to three hundred feet back, Neighborhood Business. And although that does not fall within a commercial node within our land use plan, this is something that was done back in nineteen ninety, when countywide zoning was put into place, where corridors were fairly often designated just for commercial use in general. And what the applicant would like to do is to rezone the entire property, bring the commercial area back to the creek, which is located further back on the property, add more Neighborhood Business, and utilize the multifamily in the rear of the property. Very likely, as with many of our requests here lately, this would develop under the City of Statesville's regulations because of the necessity for water and sewer. We've talked to the city, uh, city staff members, and they feel that this is a reasonable request and have agreed with our conditions. However, if the city were to annex it, obviously that would change, that could change the zoning and those conditions. This is looking at the property now. As you can see, it's almost totally wooded. View of the property, it's looking north, looking across the road. There, there are some non-residential uses in the general vicinity. It's kind of a hodgepodge. And this is looking south. This is the Chair Company down at the bottom of the hill and the cemetery going on up the hill. Based on the fact that we have Neighborhood Business use in the area, uh, on this particular property, we are recommending in favor of the request, although it does not, it does not comply with our land use plan. I think in this area, uh, as with several other areas, our plan falls short. I don't think that single-family residential is the right use for this particular property. So, based on that, the staff has recommended approval, and the planning board recommended approval seven-two to amend the land use plan and to recommend in favor of the request. And I'll be glad to try and answer any questions.
Do we have questions for Mr. Smith? Okay, thank you, Smith. Do we have anyone wishing to speak in favor or against this request?
Good evening. My name is Michael Johnson, and I am the representative of the owner. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, if you have any, but I think that, um, staff has pretty well summarized the issue. We're simply trying to clean up the zoning that exists on the site. I think that the, uh, multifamily portion to the rear and residential is consistent with the current land use plan, and of course it is zoned by right, uh, Neighborhood Business on the front. The creek is just simply a natural break point in the property. But we're ready to start the engineering work and actually get into, uh, the planning on this site, and would like to get the zoning, uh, corrected and consistent with what we think would be the best and highest use for the property.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions?
Yes.
Okay, anyone else wish to speak in favor or against this request? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to amend the county land use plan, and also to approve the zoning map amendment, and to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the adopted county land use plan, and that said approval is reasonable and in the public interest due to its consistency with the county land use plan. As a result, said approval furthers the goals and objectives of the county land use plan, and to approve the conditional use findings of fact.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Is there any questions regarding the motion? All in favor of the motion, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Mr. Smith?
The next request is owned, is owned by Shiloh Farms. The applicant is Matthew Wilson, and the agent, who I believe will be making the presentation, is Nicole Story with ESP Associates. The property is located at four thirty-one West Moreland Road. It's a relatively large piece, uh, it's over a hundred acres, a hundred and three acres. The proposed request is to go from RA, Residential Agriculture, to R twelve CUD, which is also a single-family residential district, but does require water and sewers, water and sewer service, municipal water and sewer. We have added some conditions to this request that the applicant and the owner have agreed to. Uh, some of these are tied to some information that you've been given, uh, from the town of Troutman. The town of Troutman will be providing water and sewer to the site and has subsequently requested or required certain limitations and conditions be placed on there as well. The primary, in my opinion, is the limitation on the number of lots. Uh, the town has limited the number of lots for this particular development to two hundred and twenty-four, which I have included in our conditions as well. In addition to that, water and sewer, again, must be provided, and we put that as one of the conditions, and then that no private driveways would be allowed on West Moreland Road. And as you can see here, west, there's a good bit of property along West Moreland. This came out of the planning board meeting to limit the number of curb cuts and therefore, you know, potential traffic issues on West Moreland Road, which is a very lightly-traveled road right now. This is looking at the land use, the future land use plan around exit forty-two. As you can see, all these different colors are different, uh, variations of, of commercial and, and non-single-family residential. The town of Troutman has extended utilities into this area and is become a catalyst, you know, somewhat, for a lot of the growth that we're beginning to see. This is the first of two requests that we have tonight, both of which, uh, are fairly new considering the way we're dealing with the water and sewer and things of that nature. There will be, based on this, an increase in, in the density. As you can see from the, the first page of your staff report, under our RA district, we would allow up to a hundred and ninety-six lots on this, on this property. I've tried to factor in non-developable land, and very likely, you know, one hundred and ninety-six couldn't be achieved, but that was what would be realistic. Under their request, or under the R twelve district, you could go up to three hundred and twenty-six, uh, a difference of about a hundred and thirty lots, so it's a big difference in the amount of density. The developer, again, has agreed to limit themselves to two hundred and twenty-four, which is only twenty-eight lots more than what the RA would be. There are some pretty significant issues that go along with this request, based on our growth study that we've been, that we went through over the last nine months to a year, dealing with our schools, intergovernmental cooperation, uh, urban service areas, and the provision of water and sewer. I feel like this request, although we're increasing the number of schoolchildren, I feel like we're, we're, we're coming to a good balance in weighing out the costs versus, or the benefits of, versus the detriments, and based on the fact that we feel from a staff level that the benefits will outweigh the detriments, and in this particular case, we're recommending approval. The planning board was split on this. It was a six to four, six to four vote to recommend approval as well. And one thing I did fail to mention is that the developers of our next case have been dealing with Arndale Statesville Schools on a school location in this area to handle much of the growth that's going to be taking place, uh, in addition, in addition to this, this site, uh, because there's a lot of vacant land in this area. So, a school site, probably multiple school sites are gonna be very, very crucial. I'd be glad to try and answer any questions that you, I'm sorry, let me go through some pictures. This is looking at the site. It's a very rural area right now. This, it's vacant. West Moreland Road is a gravel road for, for most of its, uh, most of the roadway, and it would, the developer would be paving the road. And this is looking across West Moreland, so really, a lot of vacant land in the area.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do we have any questions for Mr. Smith?
Just a, just a comment. Mr. Smith, I think you have to agree if you, if you... Mr. Smith, I think you have to agree if you, if you look at the area between, let's say, Shepherd and Troutman, if you go east of Shepherd down to the south end of Perchurch Road, some may argue that we haven't done it adequately, but we've done a lot to address school needs. We haven't done a lot previously, if you look on the east side of twenty-one, because there wasn't a lot of development. But there's been a recent development, and that is the fact that Troutman's gotten in the water and sewer business in a pretty big way.
Yeah.
They're going to be out there shopping for customers to service the dead on that water and sewer. I, I think we ought to work with these developers. I don't want to, I know they make financial decisions based on what we tell them is permissible. So I'm not wanting to, it looks like the two that you've worked with tonight were willing to stagger their development or at least retard some of it. And I would encourage you in the future, when you speak with them, to encourage that, at least going when we get some land bought and starting to get some schools up over there.
Mr. Smith, you made the statement that the developer is working with the schools to locate a school, or are you saying that they're providing property?
The, not, not this, not for this case, but the next case, and they can probably speak to it better than I can. It's not, it's not a dedication of property, it would be a purchase.
So what is working with the schools?
Well-
Putting more people there so they can, bill of schools, is that what you're saying?
Well, it's, it's, in my opinion, we, we've tried to, in, in our, in my conversations with the schools, they want to know what we're doing, what we're approving, and to allow a subdivision or a group of subdivisions in a particular area, knowing full well that there are no, are no plans to provide classroom space, I think is, is, we're, we're falling very short. But if, if we know that classroom space is going to be there eventually, I feel like we're doing our job. Now, I can't require at this point that they dedicate, but I feel like we're at least moving in the right direction.
You say they're striking a match, and we know we're going to have a fire.
Well, we're, we're definitely going to have a fire in this, in this area. What we're trying to do through, through our, I'll call it a phasing or limitations on the number of lots, is to slow it down to a manageable level while also utilizing water and sewer that's in the area, which is a benefit, in my opinion, environmentally for one reason, and to keep the development, hopefully, by giving, giving more density, closer to the towns who can serve it better than, than rural areas of Iredell County can. Now, that's, that's, that's one man's philosophy, but I, I feel like if we push it closer to the towns, it's going to be easier to plan for, and the water and sewer needs will be addressed quite a bit better.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do we have anyone who wants to speak for, against this proposal? We'll have the one who's for, then, then we'll have you, sir, later. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Nicole Story with ESP Associates, here representing Landcraft, and do I understand that we have three minutes or five minutes if we've got an agenda item?
Three minutes. We're running late now, we still have-
I understand completely.
To do.
I, I just want to begin real quickly by briefly, but wholeheartedly thanking planning staff of both Iredell County and Troutman, as well as the school district. They have shown us unprecedented cooperation. I also thank the Lord for many things, but most recently that I don't have to explain biodiesel or recite the elements of the periodic table tonight. I think that Mr. Smith did an excellent job of hitting the, the high points of the site plan itself. We are proud to state that we have the full support of Troutman, as you should have evidenced in your June twentieth letter from the mayor. We do understand that we will be in the City of Troutman limits, we're told, within two years. We have been extremely proactive on this site in working with the county to phase our development to allow schools to catch up in this location. We are also extending utility service to a portion of the county that is not currently served, and thus extending those economic and environmental benefits that are associated with public utility service. We are exceeding the requirements of the Troutman ordinances as well as the Iredell County ordinances as part of this request. We are dedicating public right-of-way along West Moreland Road, which does not currently exist, in addition to paving that gravel section of that road, which will create a safer roadway. We have also been told by NCDOT that they will take responsibility for improvements and widening of the bridge that exists on that road. We are proposing trails that in conjunction with nearby parcels and also with sidewalks that are proposed as part of this community could contribute to a greenway trail system for that part of the county. We have also committed to providing a swimming pool and cabana as part of more than thirty-one acres of common open space associated with this development, which will essentially become a public park for the residents of this community. All of those common open space areas will be professionally maintained and landscaped by homeowners associations, so that maintenance will not be the responsibility of the county or the town. I do have Mr. Matthew Wilson in the audience as well with Landcraft Management. He is available to answer your questions, but I'll probably take his three minutes as well. And if it is appropriate, I would like to reserve a minute or two at the end in closing.
You understood it was three minutes, right?
I understood. We've got Matthew here as well, so if I could just talk through his three as well.
Okay.
Okay. I'm available to answer any questions. Happy to do it.
Ma'am?
I'm available to answer any questions you may have, and I'll save the remainder of my time for the end.
It's just been a long night. Let's get on with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sir, if you'd like to come, you want to speak against this proposal? You state your name.
My name is Jim Mars. I live on one twenty-nine West Moreland Road, which is the paved section I'm closest to twenty-one of anybody on West Moreland Road. And I can tell you to consider something like this and not mention traffic is a criminal act. What this is going to do to the intersection of West Moreland and twenty-one is going to be horrendous. Twenty-one is a main route from seventy-seven to Mooresville. I'm sure Chairman Norman is aware of that. I'm sure he stopped probably behind me making a left turn onto West Moreland many a time and probably said a little something under his breath. What's he going to say now? With two hundred and twenty-two people more living down West Moreland, plus West Moreland being a through route from Houston Road to twenty-one, it's going to, it's going to be chaos. Someone's going to get killed. The only way to, to handle this, and I don't mean to tell you what you can and you can't do with your property, but what we need to do is something with the roads. Now, the state has said, well, we'll fix twenty-one within ten years. That's not going to do it. When are they going to build your bridge? Within ten years? That's not going to do it. You can't get up that hill, school buses can't get up that hill with, with snow on it. Did you know that?
Mr. Mars-
What are you going to do about that?
You address, you address the commissioners.
Okay, I'm sorry. But anyhow, there are numerous traffic problems here. We need a condition to this housing development, I call it a trailer park, to provide some sort of traffic light or something on twenty-one at West Moreland. We're getting another development of Windward Point and West More, or twenty-one, as far as I've heard, is going to be three lanes in front of Windward Point, two lanes in front of West Moreland, three lanes in front of this new development that's a quarter of a mile. You can't have that on a highway like twenty-one. We need a stoplight there. The, the state has said we can put one in ten years. If a developer pays for it, it'll go in in about six months. We need a developer to put a light there before somebody gets killed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Sarah Nestler, and I live on Cardinal Lane, which is really the only property in the West Moreland Farm area that adjoins this proposed development. As my neighbor Jim mentioned, traffic is an issue, and it's been an issue long before the West Moreland Farm was sold. Maybe Mr. Johnson remembers me dragging him down, standing on the corner of West Moreland and twenty-one to see the situation of trying to get out or into our street because of the conditions. There's no plans to widen twenty-one, even though we're getting a Lowe's and a Walmart, and God only knows what else up the road. There's no plans to do anything as far as improving seventy-seven, and yet you're going to build two hundred and twenty-four homes that would be on less than a third of an acre. They're looking at two thousand to four thousand square foot homes, which I'm assuming will probably start in the mid-two hundreds and up on land that's less than a third of an acre. West Moreland Road, even if it's paved, is not designed to handle that kind of traffic. The road itself will become, as Jim said, a cut-through for Mills Plantation and residents on Houston Road that don't want to go all the way around. The map shows Mills Plantation. There's sixty-five homes planned at Autumn Grove. There's two developments down on Shepherd, and four thousand homes going up at exit forty-five, and I think there's probably more than point-three children in each one of those homes that need a school before the homes are built. Shepherd cannot handle any more children. It's a long way for the middle school kids to go over to the lake, and South Iredell High is also at capacity. It's just, if Iredell County is the crossroads to the future, we've got to look beyond the future of what is decided today and make sure that the decisions we make today stand up to the test of time. Don't let them come in and say, two hundred here, three hundred there, a hundred homes here and there, when you have no room except trailers for kids to go to school in, or you can't get out of your driveway or onto the highway to get to work in the morning unless you leave at five-thirty. It's, it's time for the end of the Band-Aid treatment when this county is hemorrhaging and needs a tourniquet. It's, it's granted, it's new for our area to be developed, and we're trying to play catch-up. Two years is not going to catch the schools up. Twenty years, maybe. Two years, no. And it's, we knew buying where we bought that chances were something would go in behind us eventually. It's not that a development's going there, it's the number of homes. Two hundred and twenty-four homes on ninety acres after you take out the thirty percent of green space. It's just too many people.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak?
Good evening, once again. I'm just going to speak on this one, even though there's two in a row that seem to be the root of the problem. Jeff McNegley, once again, and this time I'm coming just as a concerned citizen of Iredell County. And the main reason I'm coming is, is we spent a lot of time, a lot of money, on a growth study plan to realize our shortcomings. R-12 in this area, and if you can't call that rule, now, I don't know what you can, it's got a dirt road right now that you're looking at. I guess my problem is, is, is when I was put on the planning board, I, I had a dream, and I was told during our meeting that that is a dream, but my dream was that the city limits would basically fill up and spill out into the county after we had done all we could in the city limits, where R-12 can be serviced well. But right now, with that new water tire that Troutman's built, I realize that we're going to be held hostage in this main part of Iredell County here that they have coerced with Mooresville to let them have. Who knew that they would go eight, ten miles outside of their ETJ to start their water sewer project and work their way back? I guess this way, there's no way Mooresville can come in and take the land back from them they agreed to let them have. But because of this, we're going to suffer the consequences as the rest of the county because the Troutman's greed with their water. If you look at the numbers proposed right there as far as water usage, I think they're going to have to build a bigger tire if they keep this up very long, between this and the next development coming. I'm going to be real quick in this part here. A lot of these developments, they're well-planned. I think they have a great idea. I just think they need to move it about eight miles closer to Troutman so they can really service them well. Where they're putting it now, we have no infrastructure. We have nothing out there. We're totally unprepared. You got Troutman, they talk about how it, you know, this school is, is under this and under that. Well, you've got enough developments in front of you in the paper that's going to bury them, just, just in a short period of time. Ron Smith did the best he could by slowing them down and getting, and getting them to agree to a smaller number in a short period of time. I'm not so sure with the housing markets, the way it's going on, if they can sell any more than they agreed to. So maybe Ron did a good job, maybe it's just what they're allowed to give him. I'll let y'all choose and decide that as county commissioners. What I will tell you, though, is, is R-twenty is as small as we need to be in Iredell County, especially in the rural parts that we're talking about. Let's look at the ETJs. Let's look inside them for R-12s and R-8s. I didn't mention nothing on Mr. Johnson, and that was just up here because they had a neighborhood business attached to it, and that is fit for R-8. It is right beside Troutman, in my opinion, and will be engulfed. This is way out. The next one is even farther out that's coming. I won't talk on that one, so it'll speed y'all's decisions up. I appreciate y'all's time, and I know it's getting late. I know how it is to have a late meeting. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else who wants to speak in regards to this request? We're running late now. Do we have any comments from the commissioners? Questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I may have my moment in closing, if you don't mind.
Now, are you taking time for this gentleman here?
I'm sorry, I thought I reserved a minute. I apologize.
Did she reserve a minute, Mr. Robinson?
I do not remember.
I'll be extremely brief. In closing, I just want to remind you that the proposed community is consistent with the land use plan for this area for Iredell County. The developer will contribute significantly to infrastructure in this portion of the county, including water, sewer, and roads. The proposed community will exceed the requirements of both Iredell County and the town of Troutman. The developer has voluntarily proposed phasing to help deal with school capacity concerns. Planning staff has recommended approval of this petition. The planning board has also recommended approval of this petition. I'm glad Mr. McNeely is here because during the planning board, he did make the statement that RA is the appropriate zoning district for all areas in the county outside of the towns where they have the ability to provide public water and sewer to developments. Also to remind you, this is only twenty-eight lots more than what would be allowed under existing zoning, and those extra homes are necessary to pay for those infrastructure improvements, including water sewer extension and improvements to the road, as well as thirty, more than thirty-one acres of common open space. And we respectfully request your approval of this petition. We thank you for your time.
Okay, we've heard the speaker and the other speakers. Do I have a motion coming forward?
Mr. Chairman, in agreement with the, the planning board and the staff's recommendation, I would make a motion to approve the zoning map amendment and to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the adopted county land use plan, and that said approval is reasonable and in the public interest due to its consistency with the county land use plan. As a result, said approval furthers the goals and objectives of the county land use plan.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Do we have any questions from the board? If not, all in favor of a motion, so aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Three to-
Was that Robinson?
Weeverson Robinson.
Pass three-two.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Smith?
This final request, the property owner is Howard and Associates Limited and Tom and Wendy Shadricks, and the applicant is Ian J. Development. Property lies between Overcash and Houston Roads, or Houston, I've always heard it as Houston. This is a, almost twice as big as the last request. There are two tracks that are included in this, and the last one was right here, more or less abutting up to the southern end of this one. It's the same type of request, RA to R-12 CUD. The same conditions have been applied, except that we didn't get a finite number on the number of lots that would be actually capped. What we did in this situation as a condition is worked with the developer to phase the, phase the development, so to speak, and limit them to what would be allowed in RA, under the densities of RA for the first two years, and then after that, they could go to what would be permitted under R-12. And there's a significance, significant difference that would, would be in there. It's, three hundred and thirty-six lots would be permitted today under RA, and five hundred and sixty-five would be permitted under R-12 if this goes through. And again, with, with the last request, there were, there are no driveways that are going to abut on either Overcash or Houston Road. This request has the same exact issues as we, as we just talked about. It's a rural area. It's a growing area. Hopefully, there will be a new school in this general vicinity, because if, even if this does not get approved, the development that's coming- does not get approved, the development that's coming will definitely necessitate that in the near future. I will point out, and I didn't say it on the last case, I totally understand the issues that came before this board and the planning board with the Growth Commission. However, we're trying to take those recommendations into consideration when looking at these requests. We're trying to funnel the development to the areas that can theoretically handle it better than those with no infrastructure whatsoever. Trying to work with the towns on coming up with a plan that will make sense and allow us to grow incrementally from the cities coming out. If the town of Troutman had an urban service area, this would be in it. And if they could annex this property, very likely if they provided the water and sewer to them, they would do that. However, they've got some statutory limitations on them now that don't allow them to do it. Water and sewer is a big issue in this area, in my opinion. I think that you all heard through the Growth Commission or through the Growth Study, the water woes that they've got on Brawley School Road, and a lot of that's based on the wells that have been drilled to serve all that development. And that's one thing that we've tried to keep in consideration when dealing with the water and sewer connectivity. But there's a myriad of issues, a myriad of potential problems and potential gains when it comes to this type of request, and we have recommended in favor of this, and by the same vote, the planning board did as well at their last meeting. And I'd be glad to try, well, let me show you this property. Very similar in location and topography as the last one. This is just looking at the property from Houston.
Excuse me. That property belongs to me.
Okay, well, I apologize. This is the general area, then, of the request. This is looking across Houston Road, and granted, this was from the same location. Southeast on Houston. This is looking at the property from the Overcash Road vantage point. This is looking down Overcash and across Overcash. This is a subdivision, I would say 50 or so lots in that subdivision. Maybe not quite that many, but that's up in this area.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Smith? Okay, thank you. You've got a question? Okay, all right. Do we have anyone here who wants to speak in favor or against the request? If you will, please come forward. Are you sworn in? You have to be sworn in.
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you.
Does anyone else wishing to speak is not sworn in?
My name is Lee Easter, and I represent the two properties here. Right now, on the upper piece, we're in negotiation with Iredale Schools on purchasing some of that property. They're wanting to put elementary and possibly a middle school on that property right now. So the other, the part below, that'll be single-family homes down there. We have a letter of intent from the school system, and we're not sure right now how much of that property they're going to want. They're wanting at least 30 acres, probably 55 acres, and possibly the whole piece of property to do one to three schools out there.
Mr. Easter, what's the total acreage on that upper track?
The upper track is 106 acres, and the lower track is about 72 acres.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions? On the upper track, we'd had that divided up into about 280 homes. The lower track was about 180 homes. So if this school thing goes through, that'll bring both those pieces down to maybe 180 homes. Thank you.
I live at 645 Houston Road. I live sort of in the middle of all this. I live, as I look out my front yard, I see the development's going to be at Westmoreland Road. The development we're talking about now adjoins my property. You've got 65 homes. You've just now put about 1,000 homes on a road that currently has less than three dozen homes. There is no infrastructure there. The roads are very secondary roads. They don't even get cleared when it snows, unless they're the very last. So you're going to have a traffic problem. There's a very hill that comes down by me that's blind, you can't see. So unless you're going to do something with the traffic, I don't see how this is going to work, because most of the people from Westmoreland Road are going to go up to Houston, right there to 21, where they can get easily on 77. Most of the people from the development we're talking about, they're not going to go up Overcash Road and cut through Amity Oswalt up to 21. They're going to cut through to Houston Road and go directly up to 21, right there at Exit 42. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who knows wishing to speak regardless of request? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion. Sure, sure.
Mr. Smith, you said you talked with the school system. What phase? We've got a three-phase school plan that we've agreed to. What phase is this new school that they said that they're going to build? What phase of construction is that?
I believe it's going to be the third phase of their plan. So it's, in talking to Mr. Miller with the school system, probably within the next two years, they would be definitely working on the structure.
We're in Phase 1 right now. We haven't been done Phase 2.
It could be Phase 2, but I think that this was a Phase 3 project, because of, I think they're going into, they're reconvening the task force, I think, in the next little bit, but I think this is a Phase 3, and I could be wrong.
Ms. Blumenstein, when were we looking at doing another set of bonds for Phase 2?
Phase 2 bonds will be in February of '08, and this one is not included in that. It's five major renovations and two new schools, one on Presbyterian Road, and then another elementary school north of our I-40 to replace Northview and Ebenezer. So as far as I know, this would be Phase 3.
I mean, this is the problem that I've got with this stuff, and that is, I mean, we've, in rapid succession here, we've got lots of folks piling in, heading for one exit. I mean, I, you know, all the people who are going to be moving here, these 700 homes, they are not working in downtown Troutman. I mean, they are not working in downtown Troutman. They are going to be heading for that exit, and we can't even get the DOT to fix the intersection of 77 and I-40. The private developer that's trying to do the Exit 45 plan, they're talking about doing a lot of the, fixing a lot of the roads themselves. There's nobody stepping up saying, "Hey, they're going to finance, you know, getting Exit 42 where it can handle this volume." And to be honest with you, there's enough houses being constructed right now in these school districts, that these capacity numbers, by the time these homes come online, those capacity numbers will be long-swamped. So my problem isn't that they want to develop the property. My problem is that I don't want to make the mistake where we let the people come and then try to fix the problems. It doesn't work. The problems are much more difficult to fix after you have thousands of people here, and then the first thing that they'll ask us is, "Why didn't y'all plan for more schools?" The plan is there, it's just in Phase 3, okay? It's many years away from now. So when the phase, when our plan matches that we'll have capacity for those kids, I'll vote yes for recommendations like this. But right now, our plan does not say that we will have buildings for these children, and I think that we would be dishonest with ourselves if we said that this agrees with our plans, because it clearly does not agree with our plans to provide schools for kids in this area. And that's what I've got to say.
Mr. Smith, and you said the school superintendent or someone in that office sent us these numbers about the number of students that would be going in?
Yeah, I've talked to Kenny Miller about this. It's been a month and a half, probably. This kind of came up right as I had started back in, and we talked about it at length. And, you know, that's one person talking to me about what they feel that they can do and that they can accommodate this. I will say that, you know, RA is going to allow a lot of development in the area, and what we're trying to do is balance it out. And it's a tough decision, because we will probably be getting many, many more of these. This seems to be the beginning of a trend, and, you know, our retreat is very timely. I will say that.
Yeah, if that's the case. If that's what we want to do, then that's fine. We need to go change the school plan so that we'll build them schools and make sure that we agree on how we're going to pay for it.
And be sure.
But we don't have, that's not what our plan is today. If we change our plan two weeks from today, I'll change my vote. But right now, our plan says these kids will not have a school.
You're talking about three schools on that site. We're talking about $100 million for three schools, at the rate we're going now. Somebody's going to have to pay that $100 million, and that development is not going to pay that $100 million. People all over the county is going to have to pay for it. As long as they understand that their taxes are going up to pay for this man's development, then that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Appreciate it. Okay, you've heard, Mr. Smith, you've heard different people talk. I will entertain a motion.
Well, now that all the hand wringing's over with, we sit here and we wonder how we're going to do this and how we're going to do that. And folks, I've been here 13 years, and I hear all the time, "Boy, it's going to be terrible, it's going to be terrible, it's going to be terrible." But look in the metro line area. Which county would you rather live in? In Iredale County. You've got a dynamic, growing economy. What you don't want to do is, you don't want to do anything to slow down that dynamic, growing economy, and you can, through economic growth, you can solve your problems. That doesn't mean that there won't be challenges ahead. Now, if you want to say that R-8 or R-20 or whatever is too small, let's have that debate, but let's don't change the rules on people in the middle of a business decision that they're trying to make. That's not fair to them. And I'm willing to discuss that, and I share some of the concerns as far as the timelessness of the development, or perhaps even to some degree, the density, but, you know, we always wonder how we're going to pay for these things. By golly, we always seem to do it. And so that's.
That's true. We vote.
I don't think we're changing the rules. The land was purchased RA. We're changing the rules.
Yeah, but under our zoning ordinance, it's permissible. Don't tell a man it's permissible to do it, and then when he makes a financial investment, he makes plans based upon the fact that with water and sewer, he can proceed in such a manner, and then pull the rug out from him in the middle of his doing.
Okay, I'm ready to entertain a motion.
Okay, I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that to approve the zoning map amendment and make a finding that the approval is consistent with the adopted county land use plan, that said approval is reasonable and in the public interest due to the consistency with the county land use plan. As a result, said approval furthers the goals and objectives of the county's land use plan.
Hey, you've heard the motion. Any questions or discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, likewise?
No.
I'll have it. 3-2.
Okay. Next item, Mr. Mashman?
All right, Mr. Chair. Under Administrative Matters, Item A, Call for a public hearing on September the 4th, 2007, at 7:00 PM regarding a release of zoning jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville for property in and around the area identified as 275 Purneus Road in Mooresville, North Carolina. Item B is updating of the Iredale County Plant Review Officer List by adding Eleanor Hiltz, Ron Smith, Michael Harper, and Lauren Page. Item C is approval of a permanent utility easement at the new Mooresville Intermediate School. Item D is approval of renewal leases with Crossroads Behavioral Healthcare for Highway 21 North, Turnersburg Road Facility, and the 231 Twin Oaks Road Site. Item E is acceptance of the 2006 annual tax settlement and the issuance of 2007 tax orders for the tax collector and the sheriff. Item F, appointment of Sharon Lester as a deputy tax collector with a term extended through June the 30th, 2008. Item G is approval of a contract with Interstate Credit Collections. Item H is approval of a three-year service maintenance contract for the DSS Building's HVAC system located on East Side Drive. Item I is approval to enlarge the Animal Grievance Committee by adding an alternate position. Item J is approval of a proclamation recognizing a veteran of three separate wars. Item K is approval of the July 24, 2007 minutes. Those are the consent agenda items, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mashman. Do we have a motion to approve the administrative? Does it move? Okay. We've heard the motion. Any questions concerning the administrative agenda? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise. Okay, next item, announcement of events occurring on boards and commissions. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, one announcement. Nation Home Advisory Committee, one announcement. Next is appointments before the board. The boards and commission, Mooresville Planning Board, ETJ, one appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to table this for the next meeting.
Okay, motion to table. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise. Safe for Planning Board, ETJ, one appointment. For that?
That's a nice deal.
I thought I did, but I'm going to wait, make sure.
A motion to.
Motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. Troutman Planning and Zoning Board, ETJ, one appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Paul Hultberg.
Okay, Paul Hultberg, thank you. Any other nominations? All in favor of Paul Hultberg, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Adult Care Home and Community Advisory Committee, two appointments.
Move to table till the next meeting.
Motion to table. All in favor of the vote, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Nation Home Advisory Committee, four appointments.
Move to table, please.
Motion to table. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise. Animal Grievance Committee, two appointments, contingent upon approval memo, we did approve that memo. Okay, do we have a motion for Animal Grievance Committee?
Chairman, I'd like to nominate Buddy Hemrich for the position, and Grant Miller for the alternate.
Okay. Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Recreation Advisory Board, one appointment.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Mike Sartorius for Recreation Advisory.
Mike?
Sartorius.
Sartorius, okay. All in favor of the motion for Mike Sartorius as the Recreation Advisory Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. Okay, I'll have it. Okay, unfinished business? Anyone? New business? Anyone? Commander's report.
No reports tonight, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, sir. Motion to adjourn? Do we have one? All in favor, vote aye.
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 Oh.
Oh.
Cool.